Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 15, 2025, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Azadryan.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Karpetian.
Here.
Kasakian. Mary Nadarian.
Here. Will you all please rise and join me in the flag salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's please welcome, as we remain standing, Valerie Weston, the Worship Chair of the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Verdugo Hills.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Weston. I'm the Worship Chair of the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Verdugo Hills, located in the La Cressenta area of Glendale. Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here. We follow principles rather than doctrine or ritual, principles of dignity, justice, equity, and democratic process amongst others. Achieving liberty and justice for all is a high priority for you youths. For this invocation, I have chosen to read a poem about utopia by Dr. Padmashri, a registered psychotherapist. Utopia Rising. Listen up, y'all. I've got a vision to share of a world where corruption doesn't dare to rear its ugly head or show its face, where justice and fairness set the pace. Imagine a place where bribes are extinct, where honest work is the only link to success and progress. Can you see it? A society where truth... Sorry. A society where truth ain't something we cheat. In this world, the powerful serve the weak. Transparency ain't just some politicians speak. It's the air we breathe, the water we drink, the foundation on which we build and think. Creativity explodes when fairness reigns. Innovation bursts from unfettered brains. No more holding back, no more fear of speaking truth to those who should hear. Education blooms like wildflowers in spring. Knowledge is power and everyone's king. Science advances, arts transcends, in a world where corruptions meet its end. Meritocracy is not a fancy word. It is lived every day, seen and heard, from the streets to the highest office, where leaders serve, not harvest profits. Picture courts where latent justice ain't blind but sees clearly with an impartial mind, where the scales tip only when the weight of truth, not the size of the wallet. You feel me, youth? In this brave new world, we've broken the chain of systemic oppression of ill-gotten gain. Every voice matters and every dream can soar in a society that's fair to its very core. Businesses thrive on innovation, not manipulation. The government serves the people, not some corporation. The media speaks truth, unafraid and bold, a new age of enlightenment, a story untold. But this ain't no fairy tale, no pipe dream. It's a future we can build, a possible regime. It starts with you, with me, with all of us, standing up for what's right, creating trust. So let's rise, make it real. This corrupt-free world, it's our ideal, where justice flows like a mighty river and fairness is a gift we all deliver. From the ashes of greed, watch creativity rise, a phoenix of progress touching the skies. This is our time, our moment to shine, in a world where justice and fairness align. Let's build this utopia, brick by brick, where corruption's absence makes innovation tick, a creative society fair and just, in our hands, in our hearts, in our trust. Dr. Padmashri. We humans have great potential to create our ideals. I encourage you to think of the best outcomes as you make decisions that lead the city of Glendale's future. Thank you again for the honor of speaking to you this evening. I wish you many blessings and positive outcomes. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, may we have your report?
Yes. The agenda for the July 15, 2025, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on July 11, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next?
Next are presentations and appointments. The first item is an announcement regarding the upcoming city council meetings. There will be no city council meeting on July 22, 2025. The next regular council meeting and housing meeting will be on July 29, 2025.
And next?
Next is proclaiming July as Disability Awareness Month.
Thank you. I do have a proclamation for Disability Awareness Month. Anyone from the audience is associated with this endeavor, please come forward. Hello? Ladies and gentlemen, the city of Glendale proclaims July 2025 as Disability Awareness Month, recognizing people with disabilities, commemorates the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and promotes disability culture and visibility. This month serves as a time to reflect on progress, remove barriers, and ensure all members of our community can participate in civic life. And who would like to receive this? And who would like to say a few words? Come forward, come forward.
Good evening, Mary Nadarian, and members of the council. My name is Sophia Martin, and I am honored to represent my fellow Hurashk volunteer coaches tonight. For the past year, I've had the privilege of volunteering at Hurashk, working with both children and adults with different abilities. Each Sunday, the coaches help lead activities that support the athlete's development, independence, and help them feel included in our community. I'm inspired every week by the resilience of the individuals we serve, at the dedication of my fellow volunteers. Volunteering has shown me how important it is for everyone to have the opportunities to grow, connect, and belong. Seeing the participants' smile and the joy in their eyes when they achieve something new is the most rewarding part of this experience. Being a part of the Hurashk family has taught me patience, teamwork, and empathy. I'm grateful for the chance to help build a more inclusive community, and I thank you for supporting our work and letting me share my experience tonight.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening. On behalf of Frank Delanterman Regional Center, a private nonprofit organization that provides lifelong support to individuals with developmental and intellectual disabilities, we are really honored to accept this proclamation in recognizing July as Disability Awareness Month. We are also honored to be one of the first pilot regional centers in the state of California, ultimately named after the former Assembly Member Frank Delanterman, who is often referred to as the founder of the regional center system. For over 50 years, we have been partnering with community organizations and cities such as the city of Glendale to enable people with developmental disabilities to live purposeful lives as active members of the community. We are really excited to continue to support and celebrate every individual and every ability this month and every day, as we are striving for a world where everyone is accepted, embraced, and acknowledged. We really appreciate and we are thankful for the opportunity to be part of this very important event, and we are looking forward to our continued partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say on behalf of the Campbell Center and New Horizons just how grateful we are for all the support that you have shown, certainly the Campbell Center, all these years. And our main focus is to make sure that folks have a chance to have a life like yours and mine, and because of your support, that happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see there are three organizations here. I, due to a snafu in the city manager's office, probably the city manager himself, overlooked that there were three organizations. I'm just kidding, city manager. I do have two proclamations, and I promise you that we will have a third. And let me ask the Hurashk to come back to our office, and we'll get you one. And I'd like to ask my colleague, Councilmember Asaturian, who recently visited the Hurashk. Was it last week or two weeks ago? I couldn't make it, but she was representing the city. I'll ask her to come down with me as we present this to the organization.
Before we go down, if I may, last year, when we did this proclamation for the first time, I had asked staff to look into doing some additional programming through our parks. I know we have teen night out, we have parents' night out, but when we talk about being inclusive and creating spaces and breaking down barriers, one of the thoughts was to look into having teen nights out, teen night out for kids with special needs, as well as parents' night out. I recognize that additional accommodations would need to be made, but I haven't seen anything come through in the last year. City Manager Gulanyan, is this something that I need to bring up formally, or is this something that staff can just take on on their own? Because I feel like every time I bring up things that should be, what I see as things that are not policy, but make us a better city, I would prefer not to waste council time on...
Councilmember Satrian, I will have to check what, excuse me, park staff. If this is going to require additional resources and funding, then it will have to be directed by council.
Maybe we can... It's not necessarily just adding. Maybe we switch out one of the teen night outs and one of the parent night outs and be more inclusive. Thank you.
We do have a call, and let's take the call on this item.
We have a card as well.
Card, okay, very good.
The first public speaker is Tony Passarella.
Evening, council. Tony Passarella. First, let me thank you for proclaiming July as Disability Awareness Month. Thank you for that. But you can't make this up. So you're about to deploy a fleet of e-bikes and e-scooters, essentially turning the streets and sidewalks into demolition derby, hoping no one ends up in the ER. That's not awareness. That's irony so thick it needs its own proclamation. Let's talk about real life. Glendale's streets are already terrifying. Your own data shows speeding and reckless driving is the number one concern of Glendale voters. And now you're going to tell able-bodied people to hop on app-rented, semi-functioning scooters.
Mr. Passarella, may I pause your time? You're straying somewhat from the proclamation of the Americans with Disabilities.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
I'd like you to bring it home. If you continue on a policy regarding scooters, I'm gonna cut you off. Go ahead. Let's see where you end up.
That's not, that's not a transit plan. That's an episode of Wipeout. And what happens to our disabled... I need some time back, please, if I don't finish here. That's not a transit plan. That's an episode of Wipeout. And what happens to our disabled citizens, the very people we're honoring this month? Wheelchair users, blind pedestrians, folks on walkers, seniors just trying to get to their doctor's appointment. They'll now have to share narrow sidewalks with these high-speed, low-skill, zero-accountability riders. The law is a rumor and public safety is a casualty. They care only about chasing the next thrill. Ask Chief Sid about enforcement. And what about our beloved Armenian grandmas? These women survived communism.
I know, Mr. Passarella. I understand what you're saying. That's, you know, something that we're developing a policy for, but this is regarding the Disability Awareness Month.
This is what this is all about. The whole presentation is about that.
I'm gonna give you 30 more seconds, even if you veer off course, and then we're going to...
You're just trying to mess me up. You're just trying to spoil my presentation because I'm over the target, and I'm hitting a home run here tonight, and you're trying to mess me up. That's what's going on here.
I'm not trying to mess you.
And Mr. Brotman's over there laughing.
We're not, we're not laughing at you, but we're trying to keep it on point.
Okay, Mr. Brotman, take a trip to Santa Monica Boulevard. I mean, to Santa Monica, ride around on a scooter, dodge a clutter, swerve around, texting scooter riders dumped in the middle of crosswalks, no enforcement, chaos on wheels. If you make it back alive and still think this is Glendale, needs its deploy away. Now, this is for all of you right here. I'm bringing it home. Don't sit here and proclaim Disability Awareness Month while pushing policy that actively endangers these very people you're pretending to protect. That's not awareness. That's negligence dressed up as progress.
Thank you.
I got 50-something seconds left here. Look at this.
But you made your point, Mr. Passarella.
I hope I did.
I appreciate you coming forward. Next.
The next speaker is Fernando Roldan. Fernando, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you, madam, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. First of all, thank you for bringing this awareness of Disability Awareness Month. Of course, you'll also remember that October is also the second Disability Awareness Month. And folks, I'd like to ask my city, my city and the city of Glendale, that in the future, when we do honor the Americans with Disabilities Act, especially the 35 years, honor those who've constructed ramps, honor those who are working, honor those who basically created this document, like the late Dr. Justin Dart, who was a university professor who was neglected by not going to the University of Nebraska. These are the people that we need to honor in our halls and all of that. And my hope is that next year, when you do the ADA, at least honor those thought-Americans who created this document, and of course, honor the late President Bush, who signed it into law. I mean, that's important because we, because in order to understand what the ADA is about, it's about really about breaking down barriers. It's about, it's a civil rights law, and of course, I ask that we honor that law, you know, for those who are going to school, who are working, and of course, my hope again is that one day, the mayor and the council create a disability advisory committee, so we can advise you folks on things that are around Glendale, as volunteers, of course. And as usual, that's my two cents. But thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you would join me.
May I say a couple words on...
Of course you can. Oh, please.
Well, good evening. My name is Armon Manatsaganian, and I'm, I serve on the executive board of the Hurashk program. On behalf of the board and personally, I would like to say sincerely thank you for recognizing the Hurashk program. It's an honor to speak on behalf of the community that's given me so much and that's given so much to the broader community. Just a little bit of background, the Hurashk program was established in March of 2018 on the occasion of Homanat Men's Centennial. And as many of you know, Homanat Men is a global organization that has a longstanding history of athletic programs, scouting programs, and to serve the Armenian youth and Armenian communities. We have an athletic director and an assistant athletic director that designs specific and specialized programs to include athletes of all ages and abilities. And Hurashk wants to continue this mission of Homanat Men with bringing a unique mission of including all these people, whether it be cognitive, behavioral, physical, or emotional challenges. We currently have 67 active athletes. We have over 100 dedicated volunteers from the community, students from local high schools, colleges, people in the broader community, and athletes range from age five years old all the way up to 54 years old. And we give adaptive equipment and one-on-one personal support. It's important to note that, to this day, we have not turned away from any single athlete. And it's also important to note that our mission is rooted in empathy and compassion, but it doesn't stop there, because that doesn't fully encapsulate the depth and breadth of what we stand for. If we just stop at empathy and compassion, we fail to recognize that these people that have these disabilities and unique challenges, we fail to recognize the power and influence they have. Most of the power and influence and the way we teach and empower is through argument, financial means, through proposals. These are all honorable pursuits and means. But these individuals that have a lot of trouble with self-regulation, who some of them cannot even verbally communicate, they teach us through something that we've forgotten, which is presence. And as personally, as a coach of six, seven years, I've worked with these athletes. And when someone is this radically authentic, when they are not very conditioned by the social scripts and the, a lot of the social scripts and conditioning of the environment, they demand something from you. And they don't primarily see inclusion as mere accommodations and accessibility. Of course, this is crucial and necessary. But what they want, what they crave, what we call special needs, is something that we all need and crave and that we all yearn for, which is to be recognized for one's essence before any categories we put onto them. And that's worked wonders in the coaching program. And they crave that even before help or empathy. And on behalf of the board, I just want to say we're honored to receive this recognition, and we see it as a validation and encouragement to continue the true meaning of inclusion. So thank you very much.
We're gonna have one for Hurashk. Take a photo, if you all... Let's get the proclamations in the middle. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And the next item, please.
The next item is proclaiming July as Parks Make Life Better.
Parks Make Life Better. What a, what a perfect slogan. The city of Glendale proclaims July 2025 as Parks Make Life Better Month, celebrating the city's 47 parks, 5,000-plus acres of open space, and the role recreation plays in health, wellness, and community connection. Residents are encouraged to enjoy Glendale's outdoor spaces, programs, and community services. And welcome.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Assistant Director, what's your title? Deputy Director?
Mayor Nadarian, members of council. My name's Savaghar Abidin, Community Services Manager with the Community Services and Parks Department. Thank you. July is Parks Make Life Better, and I'm here to accept a proclamation on behalf of the department. But I'd like to share some information. First, I'd like to ask the city clerk to play a video we prepared with the friends of our, with the help of our friends at GTV6, our colleagues at GTV6, and a mission we want everybody to participate in. So if we could please play that video.
Did you know that July is Parks Make Life Better Month? The city of Glendale is celebrating our beautiful parks and events this month by inviting you to come out and participate to come out and participate in the sticker mission, Parks Make Life Better. The challenge lasts throughout the month of July and is a fun way for families and individuals to come out to Glendale's parks, programs, and community events. Step one, download the Agents of Discovery mobile app on your smartphone or tablet. Step two, review the list of participating parks, programs, and events where you can collect a sticker. Step three, visit our locations, complete missions, and attend events in the month of July to get a collection sheet and begin collecting your stickers. Step four, show your completed mission or check in with staff at each location to receive a sticker on your collection sheet. Step five, collect six or more stickers to earn a prize and be entered into a gift card drawing. Visit our website at glendaleca.gov/pmlb for more information and to see a list of events and locations to collect your stickers. Everyone who collects six stickers will receive a prize. Two grand prizes will be awarded. We can't wait to see you out in the parks this summer, and remember.
Parks Make Life Better!
So, earlier, I dropped off a bag. We'll get to that bag and more details in a minute, but in there is your sticker mission paperwork, and we look forward to seeing you at some of our upcoming events where you could collect those stickers. Every participant who turns in a sticker will get a Duke, mini Duke, squishy, or a keychain that they could keep, and we will put them into a drawing for a bigger gift card. Next, I wanted to highlight how we kicked off July's Parks Make Life Better. We started on July 2 with Summer Concerts in the Park, and this year, during Summer Concerts in the Park, we're adding a new feature. We're bringing theater in the park. That will be tomorrow. It's presented by Shakespeare by the Sea, and they are going to be presenting As You Like It. So that'll be July 16 at Verdugo Park, and that will be, for the first time in a really long time, we're bringing theater back into our parks. Next, Saturday night, July 19, is Cruise Night, and that's what the rest of the bags are. So Cruise Night will feature more than 300 classic cars. Over 40,000 people will be in attendance, and I wanted to thank our Cruise Night sponsors, specifically BMW and Downtown Glendale Association for sponsoring this year's event. concludes my presentation, and we look forward to seeing you guys at our parks and our events.
Thank you. Cruise Night is at 5:30.
Cruise Night is 5:30 until 10:30 on the Brand Boulevard of Cars between Broadway and Doran.
And there are hundreds of classic cars that are presented. And tell us about the music, and do we have fireworks this year, or what do we got?
No, this year, we do not have fireworks. We have over 300 cars registered currently, classic cars, anywhere from what you see in 20s, 30s, redone, to in natural state with their original patina, to more modern cars. Some exotics will be there as well. There's over 40,000 people that attend the event over the five blocks of Brand Boulevard. This year's entertainment lineup is Elton John, so that will be our premier headlining entertainment. And the main stage will be closer to Brand and Milford, while the south end will be my staff with Mobile Recreation and the Climbing Wall on Broadway.
And most of the city departments will have a presence?
All city departments have a presence. Most all of them will be there, from police and fire to Public Works to Gunda Water and Power. All of our departments will be presenting or having informational booths during the event, in addition to our local businesses and vendors and anybody else that has registered. So there's more community booths, there's department booths as well, some interactive exhibits, and an opportunity to hang out and see our men in uniform or men and women in uniform with their shiny trucks with flashing lights.
The climbing wall usually is there.
Carnival Games will be there.
The restaurants.
The restaurants will all be open.
Will all be open, so it'll be really fun. It's a very fun family event to spend what looks like it's gonna be a wonderful summer evening. Council members will be there, so if you have a question, you can grab us and ask us a question about, question about anything. Some of us know more about cars than others. I think there'll be some bicycle and alternative transportation.
Yes, those will be displayed.
Exhibits also, not to leave Mr. Brotman's favorite mode out of the mix. And I am gonna ask my two colleagues who haven't gone up yet this evening, Mr. Garpetian and Mr. Brotman, to present you with this proclamation. And Duke, what's his name? Duke?
Duke. Major in Wilderness Park.
Okay. Mr. Garpetian and Mr. Brotman, please do us, do us proud.
I need to position you for a second.
Yeah, you meet down and give it to Duke.
I see Mr. Belonikian in the back.
Mr. Belonikian. There you go. Don't be shy. Thank you, Savag.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing the theater to the park.
Yes. That'll be nice. Okay, before we go to item four on the agenda, I am gonna ask our city attorney to explain new ground rules that we on council have voted to implement, and hopefully, we'll be able to learn with the public as we go forward. Do we have a caller?
Mr. Mayor. GWP's new app.
Okay, oh, here we go. GWP's launch of the new My, yes, please read the next item.
Next is GWP's launch of the new My GWP portal.
Presentation. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Jean-Carlo Quintaro. I'm the Senior IT Application Analyst, and I'm here today to announce the launch of our new My GWP portal coming next, next Tuesday. So here are some things to expect. The site will be launching July 22. That's next Tuesday. Customers will continue to access the portal using the same website, so that's not changing. They'll continue to access it using mygwp.glendals.ca.gov. There will be some downtime during this transition and this migration from the old site to the new, but if customers need to make any payments during that downtime, our phone systems will be available to them. For existing customers, since we are migrating over existing accounts, they'll be able to use their existing email and username from the old account, and they'll simply be asked to reset their password. We will be sending out emails that morning with instructions on how to do that, but if anybody accesses the site earlier, they can simply just go to forgot password and then follow the instructions from the email. As part of the migration, we also are asking all the customers to re-enroll in auto pay. Unfortunately, this is not a feature we were able to bring over from the old site, so we'll be asking customers to re-enroll. And then, just lastly, a simple change or a minor change, but it's just review your first and last name. Again, the migration can cause some issues with that coming over, so just review it under your profile settings. So those are just some things to know. Next, we presented, we put together a quick video on some of the new features coming with the new site.
Welcome to Glendale Water Empower's new and improved My GWP portal, where you can continue to view and pay bills, review your consumption, and much more. As part of this new portal, all users will be required to change their passwords and re-enroll in auto pay. You will receive separate emails prompting you to change your password and re-enroll in auto pay. To get started, select Sign Up Now and fill out all the required fields. For new logins to the portal, your username and password will be required the next time you log on, so keep a record of it. Keep a bill handy. You will need to know your account number that is printed on the bill. You'll also need the service address zip code. Once you've registered, check your email inbox. You will need your email to verify your accounts. After you log in, you can now see all the portal's features. On your dashboard, you'll notice several tabs on the left-hand side. The Bills and Payment tab allows you to access months of billing details. You can also manage stored credit cards and bank account information, set up auto pay, or simply make a one-time payment. The Transactions tab displays account-related payment transactions. The Reading Usage tab allows you to view metered utility consumption and weather data over time and download your data. You can even note My Events on the chart to explain what was happening at the time. The Digital Meter tab allows you to view daily and even hourly metered utility consumption to better understand your usage. The Compare tab allows you to analyze changes in usage from last month to even last year. The Profile tab allows you to edit your email address, add additional utility accounts to your profile, or allow a guest to use your access to your online account. You can also set up notifications here in case you need to monitor your usage or when your bill is due. The Forms tab provides additional links to stop or transfer utility service, update account information such as mailing address or phone number, or request additional services. The Outages tab allows you to easily report an electric or water outage in your area. Our team is ready to respond 24 hours a day, seven days a week. With our portal, navigating your account has never been easier.
Great.
And that concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Looks like there's a lot of good stuff you can get off of that.
Yes.
I may even get off my paper bill.
Paperless, you can sign up for paperless, auto pay.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
We'll be, we'll be in touch if we have any questions. Okay, now, before we go to four, Mr. City Attorney, please tell us what we, as a council, voted to change in terms of our rules of decorum and conduct of the meeting.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor and members of council. On June 3, the council adopted a resolution to change the order and some of the, some of the rules pertaining to our council meetings. I will briefly summarize the changes as they pertain to public input, as well as the process for council deliberation on matters. So with respect to public input, in addition to commenting on agenda items, the public will have the opportunity, three different opportunities to address the council. The first will be community event announcements, which was a carryover from the previous process. However, under that, under community event announcements, there will no longer be general public comment allowed during that period. It'll be only for community event announcements. Immediately following community event announcements will be the first period of oral communications. During this period, in which speakers will be permitted to speak up to three minutes per speaker, for a total aggregate speaking time of 30 minutes, members of the public may speak on matters on the agenda or matters not on the agenda, as long as they're within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. If an individual speaks during first period on an agenda item, he or she may not speak on that item when the item is called. Also, if an individual speaks on a non-agenda item during first period of oral communications, then he or she may not speak during the second period of oral communications. Again, that three-minute maximum speaking time may be reduced by the mayor, taking into account the number of speakers. So if there's more than 10 speakers American, at his discretion, reduce that time to less than three minutes. There is also a second period of oral communications, which is basically, will essentially function as the previous period of oral communications near the end of the Agenda Item 14. With respect to speaker cards, just want to note again that speaker cards for community event announcements or first or second period of oral communications, and this pertains not only to speaker cards, but members of the public who are calling in to give public input via our telephone and communication system, must do so prior to the commencement of those periods. So prior to the city clerk reading those items into the record, people must submit their cards or call in and be in the queue. With respect to consent calendar items, the process remains the same, that those persons must submit their cards or be in the queue before a motion is made on the consent calendar. And then for all other agenda items, including action items, those cards or calls must occur prior to the completion of the verbal staff report. And again, just a warning, that can be waived at the mayor's discretion, but a warning, not every action item comes with a staff report, depending on whether or not the council wishes to receive a report on the item. So all members of the public wishing to speak on agenda items should do so as early as possible to make sure that they're in the queue. With respect to council debate and deliberation, the resolution that was adopted on June 3 puts into place some existing rules or codifies some existing rules as well as putting in some new rules. So again, council members must confine their remarks to the question under debate, avoiding personal remarks. A council member who has the floor may not be interrupted unless a point of order is raised. Each council member is gonna be able to speak on an item, can only speak on an item once before a council member has a second opportunity to speak. Let me say it another way. Every council member is gonna have an opportunity to speak before another council member has a second opportunity to speak. And then the new rules also impose time limits during deliberation for each council member's comments. That initial round of comments will be five minutes per council member, and then every round after that will be three minutes per every council member who wishes to, again, speak on the item. Those time limits may be waived or extended by the mayor, either on his or her own or upon a request of a council member, which should be made before the council commences debate on the item. Again, there'll be no limitation on the number of rounds of deliberation that the council may engage in unless the question is called or the debate has ended. And then speaking time, that speaking time, those speaking time limitations do not apply to questions posed by council members. So that's a summary of the rules. There's also some rules regarding council member future agenda requests, which I will provide a summary of when we get to that item later in the meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I hope everyone got that. Please bear with us. We're gonna be learning these rules and learning them with you as we go along. I will try to err on the side of giving the members of the public the opportunity to speak. And as far as my colleagues go, I will gently nudge you if we get to the five-minute point of your initial opening remarks. There may be a buzzer that goes off as the city clerk puts the time in front, but don't let that bother you. We're working on something that's perhaps a little more subtle in the future meetings that we have. So let's move on to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, the next item is consent items. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Are there any?
There are no speaker cards on this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brotman.
I would like to pull one item. Let me find it. That would be 4B.
Okay, we will pull 4B. Would someone like to move the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members. Asadrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kazakian. Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Please read 4B into the record.
4B is Public Works Regarding Appropriation of Grant Funds for the Climate Mobility Application. One Resolution of Appropriation for $236,000 in Grant Funds from the California State Transportation Agency, CALSTA, to Support the Climate Mobility App.
Mr. Brotman.
This may sound funny coming from me, but when I consider the cost of this and look at the functionality of this app, which seems fairly limited, I started asking the question of whether we could do something more impactful with this money. Now, I know that $236,000 of this is reimbursable, but there would be a $78,000 match that the city would have to pony up. The app basically is something that, I guess, a transit user can use to calculate the GHG reduction of their trips, and it also provides a little, a bit of a trip planner functionality to it. But again, might seem weird coming from me, but $78,000. but $78,000 I would put towards a number of things, perhaps more outreach and education on our leaf blower ordinance or something else that I think would have a greater impact in reducing greenhouse gas emissions than this would. So my ask perhaps of the city manager to begin with is, is there a way we can do a simpler version without that $78,000 match having to be offered up?
Councilmember Brockman, thank you for the question. That $78,000 matching funds will come out of Measure M. So there are certain criteria for eligibility of these funds to pay for other functions and programs, but we can certainly look into perhaps reducing the scope so that we don't have to come up with that matching fund.
Okay. And I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I think there are probably some other things we can do. I don't know, you know? So maybe we can't do something with the leaf blower education, but maybe there's something we can do with transit fares. Maybe we can have-
Transportation-related.
Free transit fares for a month to get people starting to think about taking the bus, or we can do something I think would be more impactful.
If that's the council's direction, then you could revise the motion, amend the motion.
Let's hear from Councilmember Karpetian and Councilmember Asaturn.
Couple of questions. This briefing I asked, they said this app was made about a year ago. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And the cost was $400,000?
So that's the appropriation amount, but that is not necessarily, that's what we're budgeting for. But the cost is about $366,000, but we appropriated $400,000.
And how much did we spend on it already?
We do have our transit manager who can speak to the amount that we spent. But one thing I did want to note that it's important for this consideration is that this is part of a suite of different initiatives that we're undertaking that has helped us in our application process to electrify our B-line buses, the money that we received from the TRICP for the B-line facility upgrade that we're doing. So this is all part of what helped our application for us to be able to move forward. So I did want to give that for the council's consideration, that this is ultimately part of a suite of efforts that we're doing to try to reduce greenhouse emissions. So this is just one element, but we do have our transit manager who can speak to the current status and the amount of money that's been expended thus far.
I just want basic, simple numbers. How much is the total cost? How much did we spend already? I know we had $33 million, $33.1 million in 2022 that we spent on the parking deck, installing electrification infrastructure and the buses and everything else. I understand it's part of that program. But I would like to know, how much did we spend on it? And what is the total cost of it?
So, Councilmember Karpetian, we spent $197,000 of the $236,000.
Is it from this, the funding came from the city or from the Measure M?
From, no, from the state.
From the state. So we're not paying, because my understanding is we have to, we have matching numbers of almost $78,000?
Correct. But we have not spent that money yet.
We haven't spent that money. And I asked as to how many people use it. They said like 200 people.
Correct.
Within the last one year or so. I don't know. I think, I agree with Mr. Brockman. I don't know, at this point, if we don't vote for this, what happens to this program? What happens to this app? Does it go away? Because I don't know how many people are going to calculate on their app if they take this bus from point A to point B. What would be the greenhouse gas reduction? I don't know. How does it work? Is it?
It's, so they, you do a trip planning. Excuse me, I need to sit down. Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So it's a trip planning app. So you would, you go on, I think Councilman Asaturn downloaded it. And so you can do a trip planning, and you take the trip, and it shows the amount of GHG reductions for that trip. So as part of the application, the state of California is looking for other strategies to increase ridership on the bus. And so this was one of the elements that we added to the application.
Okay. And the total cost of it is $400,000?
No, the total-
$300,000. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Correct. The application, it was $318,000. $236 was coming from the state, and it's state-funded. And then we were matching $78,000.
Okay.
Let me go back to our new rules, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilmember Asaturn. Did you?
Yeah, I did, but I think my questions were answered.
Okay. Then back to Mr. Brockman.
I'm just wondering, so what are our options? If we wanted to use the $78,000 for something that might be more impactful, are we able to do that without jeopardizing the other elements of this program? Because they're all very, very important.
Right. And so my suggestion would be to continue and finish the state-funded portion. And then we will just not, we can stop the project as soon as the state funding is exhausted.
And the app will be completed?
Oh, it's complete. It's usable today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a fun app.
But I don't understand. So we could just not spend the $78,000?
The $78,000 is the match.
It's a match, but it's part of a larger project. And so the match, we've already, maybe might match the entire amount in a different component of the grant.
Okay. It's a little bit over my head, but as long as, I just don't want to waste money on something that I don't think a lot of people are going to use personally, so.
We, I encourage you to download it and try it out.
So a part of it too, weird.
I know.
This is weird, a conversation, but let's sort of bring this to a close if we can and decide.
If I may, because I've downloaded the app, I've used the app. It's actually a fun app that makes you think of Nintendo from like Mario Brothers, collecting coins as you go. It's very interactive. I think we just need to do a better job of letting people know and perhaps even looking at working with our schools, because it's something I think that would be desirable for teenagers. There's some games on there and whatnot that you can also play and whatnot. So I think of my teenage nephews, and we used to go around collecting Pokemon around town. So it's, you know, it's a good way to engage. The only thing that I did want to know was, is there opportunities to add additional information on the app? Or is it specifically for transportation? Because my brain went to the public benefit programs, for example, with GWP. And if we are talking about, you know, climate-related, environmental, you know, these are some things that like, is there opportunities for us to plug in information about, here's some ways to reduce in your house, and here are some programs that are available?
Yes, Councilman Asaturn. There is a section, Latest Buzz, that we can add information on other climate-related initiatives that the city is sponsoring.
So we technically could use it and add things for like the leaf blowers and other information that we're trying to get out to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we have the item before us. Is there a motion on that?
Or do we modify it, or is there something?
Well, the resolution, Mr. Mayor and City Council, the resolution is to appropriate the grant funds. So that is not going to change, correct?
But that's the confusing part. The grant funds are $236,000. And how did we make this app if it's functioning for a year and hasn't been, did we pay for it? Were you trying to get reimbursed?
Right.
Okay, there you go. That's the thing. It's just, why would we pay $400,000 for? I know it's taxpayer, I know it's grant fund, but it's, grant fund is taxpayers' money. Measure M funds are taxpayers' funds. I don't know. I cannot support it the way it is, so.
Would you like to craft a motion?
Well, I'll just, can I move the item with a proviso that we don't provide the $78,000 match and that we redeploy that for some other activity that would encourage ridership? Is that?
We can, supposed to, Councilmember Brockman, we cannot.
I'm confused, but.
We haven't paid the $78,000. We're seeking reimbursement for most of the $236 that.
The resolution is for $236,000 in grant funds.
But did the council approve this app to be generated and to be made and put in place with $400,000?
So, Councilman Karpetian, we brought the project when we were awarded the $34 million. We brought the project back to City Council, and they accepted the grant. In that, there was a listing of all the different components of the grant, which included the Climate Mobility App.
Okay. So in that case, I will approve to get reimbursed, the $236,000 or $7,000, but I do not want us to spend a penny more on this app at this time. Maybe you can fund the funds out to something else.
It's part of a larger grant we got, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I, can you, I think, okay. You guys need to like go through the details. We applied for a grant, we received the grant. And part of that grant was, you had line items of different things that you had to do in order to qualify for the grant. The total amount was?
$34 million.
$34 million. Okay. And part of that, right, was using this as one of the items that was required by the grant. So now we are getting, we're moving to get reimbursed, correct, through that grant.
Yeah, but then you have to spend another $78,000 besides getting the $236.
Well, I don't see a resolution appropriation for the $236,000, so that's.
$236,000.
That's all I see. So that's what you're going, you just want to apply, you just want to reimburse yourselves for the money you spent from the grant funds. That's what this item will do.
Correct.
What was that $78,000 that we were told is a matching funds?
So that is the city's obligation as part of this grant. That was already part of the project that's been approved. We've, now it's just, like as was mentioned, this is to appropriate the grant funds.
So the $78,000, sorry, is not for this project in particular?
It is.
It is.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'll move to, I'll move to approve the reimbursement request, however we want to state that properly. But the reimbursement request for the $200,000, what's that number again? $36,000?
What happens to the other, though?
I don't know.
Could staff explain what happens to the other if we don't approve the $78-something thousand?
That's not before us to approve.
We're going to have to do it at some point, right?
So the project was funded in the budget under the Be the Solution, and that is where the $400,000 was, that was the budget for that project. Doesn't mean we have to spend $400,000. That was up to $400,000. The intention was to seek reimbursement, but we talked to finance, and you need to set up a grant fund in order to do the reimbursements. And that's why we're here tonight, is to get the grant fund approved so that we can begin the reimbursements for this.
Okay. So we don't have to spend the $78,000 if we reduce the scope of the entire app usage?
Correct.
Correct.
And I think that's the motion that we're hearing.
That is what I'm trying to get at, yeah.
Mr. Karpetian. Being moved and seconded. Just so everyone knows, I did receive a card from the public after this item had already been read into the record. I did ask that card to be returned to the speaker. Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes. And sorry for opening a can of worms.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian. Mayor Najarian.
Yes. The next item, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments, including reports from conferences and regional meetings.
I will start from the right side. Mr. Brockman.
Okay. I'll be very fast. I have nothing to raise, but I do want to say I will be missing our next council meeting on July 29th. Yes, because I will be in Toronto for my daughter's wedding, which is next week, Thursday, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. My first child being married off. And so I will see you again on August 12th.
Thank you. All of our best to the couple.
Thank you.
Councilmember Asaturn.
I'd like for us to agendize for one of the upcoming meetings to discuss the World Cup and Olympics. It would be nice to get a report from staff on what we're doing, how we can be part of the different games and what we have in place. I also know that there are several different regional bodies that have come together for the Olympics and the World Cup. I understand that staff is taking part in the '88 for '28. And there's a meeting coming up on July 27. Was it yesterday? Or '17? And then the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments is also putting together an ad hoc committee that requires cities to participate. I just want to make sure I know that other cities are having these conversations. I know we would need to, if we're going to end up doing fan zones for the Olympics, we need to come up with our own local procurement process. I just want to know what the plan is. This is a discussion we've had with staff, and I passed on whatever was provided to me during my time as mayor. But it would be nice for all of us to have a discussion on what we want to do. I'm not sure, for example, if our sister cities have been approached already for them to be, you know, for those countries at least to be invited to be housed in Glendale. You know, there's different avenues to ensure that we're part of the process and part of the festivities as it comes to the World Cup and the Olympics.
Thank you. Mr. Karpetian.
Yes. Just a follow-up. Can we add the World Cup to that conversation? Because it's, oh, you've mentioned that, okay. I knew that. I was just testing you to see if you remember. Well, I like to, I like to have an item agenda is to have a discussion over the state mandates that override local land use authority and include provisions that deny reimbursement for substantial costs imposed on the city and the taxpayers to implement those mandates. With those mandates, they come, they increase the demand for essential infrastructure, services, roadside walks, water and sewer systems, power grids, emergency services, solid waste facilities, parks, and what have you. Without state funding, the cost of compliance will fall on the taxpayers. Many cities are having this discussion. I want us to have a discussion and see what our rights are and what, how can we kind of demand some of the fundings that they are required to provide for the demands that they make? And go from there.
Councilmember Karpetian, is there a specific bill number or is it generally?
There are so many housing bills that came down, There are so many housing bills that came down, SB 79, 2097, you name it. There are so many bills that will require the city in order to implement them, we have to be able to provide infrastructure and services for these projects that are coming through, through those bills. And when they're a mandate, you cannot deny them, but you still have to provide the infrastructure, and that puts a huge burden on many cities. City of LA, they did a cost analysis on SB 79. If they want to implement the whole thing, it's $1.6 billion on their cost. So I'd like us to see what our rights are and how can we maybe push back a little bit and find out what are our rights, what we can do to get reimbursed for some of the costs at least that's going to be imposed on the cities.
Very well.
Can we agendize this item next, for next session, for next, next hearing, meeting?
It'll be on Council, yeah, Councilmember Garbentian, it'll be on Councilmember Future Agenda Request for the next meeting, and then once the council agendizes it, then.
Okay.
Then we put it in queue.
Okay, thank you. Tomorrow at the Adult Recreation Center at 6:00 PM, there will be an open house, an outreach event for the new Bus Rapid Transit Line, which is gonna be coming through Glendale. It's called the NoHo Pasadena Line. This is something that the City of Glendale has been advocating for close to 30 years, if not longer, starting way back with Larry Zarian when he was on council. So please show up, express your concerns, your comments, your approval, whatever it may be, but tomorrow will be an in-live session at the Adult Recreation Center at 6:00 PM. This weekend, several of us attended the Independent Cities Association Conference in San Diego. During that conference, our very own member, Councilmember Asaturian, served as a moderator during an active discussion for Crisis Communications, in which she relayed some of her experiences with the City of Glendale since 2020 COVID on, to present date. There were seminars on artificial intelligence, helping the city reduce costs and to streamline, as well as ethics training for council members, and a discussion of the First Amendment rights during council meetings. It was a very good conference. Glendale was well represented amongst the independent cities, defined as those cities that have their own fire department and police department. And according to AB 1234, we need to make that disclosure. And we honored the police department last week during the awards luncheon, again, thanks to all the honorees and the department in general, all the way from our new recruits up to the chief. We're very proud of our police force. And that's all I have. Let's move on to the next item.
Next is Community Event Announcements, three minutes per speaker. Members of the public will be permitted to announce upcoming events taking place in the community. We have three speaker cards on this item.
Okay, and again, these are only community events. There will be a three-minute session for general comment after this. So Madam Clerk.
The first announcement is by Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
Hi. I just would urge people at Cruise Night, in addition to saying hello to everybody, and saying hello to my dog when I go there, that you visit, there's a booth by a Glendale resident, Alec, Alex Belikian, and he's gonna have a lot of information about trying to make Glendale more affordable and better for all the residents. So his name is Alex Belikian, and I recommend that you stop by his booth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Shane Lee. I'm the chapter leader for Glendale YIMBY. We're a pro-housing organization. We're having our July happy hour, July 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Porto's Bakery, 315 North Brand Boulevard. We're gonna talk about how we love density in apartments and how we want to build more apartments in Glendale, especially in single-family neighborhoods. So if you want to come hang out with cool people, come to that event. Again, July 31st, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, Porto's Bakery on Brand Boulevard. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. I almost didn't recognize you without your yellow shirt, I want you to know that.
Our final announcement is by Ellen Durham.
Hi, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. Thanks for setting aside the section of the meeting for community events. We no longer have to be afraid of getting crowded out by non-community event comments by members of the public. The Alex Films Society's Summer Film Series will continue on Saturday, July 26 in the evening with the screening of the 1944 classic film noir Double Indemnity. This unforgettable film noir stars Barbara Stanwyck, Fred McBrury, Edward G. Robinson in brilliant performances. Legendary filmmaker Billy Wilder directed and co-wrote the screenplay with Raymond Chandler, based on the novel by James M. Kane. It's set in LA, there are lots of references to places in LA, including Glendale, and there's a scene filmed at the Glendale train station. There's lots of snappy dialogue in the Raymond Chandler style. Double Indemnity will be shown on Saturday, July 26, on the lawn in front of the doctor's house in Brand Park. Gates open at 6:00 PM, the program starts at 7:30. The event is free, everybody's welcome. Bring folding chairs, blankets, picnic if you like. This event is being sponsored by the Alex Films Society, the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association, Brand Associates, GNC Properties, with the generous support of Glendale's Parks Department. Thank you.
Thank you. And does that conclude the community events?
Correct, yes.
And please read the next section.
Next is the first period of oral communications, maximum three minutes per speaker, 30-minute aggregate speaking time limit. Members of the public may address the council on agenda items or non-agenda items within the city council subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker addresses the council on an agenda item during the first period of oral communications, they may not speak again when the agenda item is called. A speaker who addresses the council on non-agenda items during the first period of oral communications may not speak during the second period of oral communications. We have currently four speaker cards. The first speaker is Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Council, Tony Passarella. We're being told to change everything, how we move about, how we live, all because of carbon dioxide. But before we trade our freedoms for bike lanes, let's ask, what's the truth about CO2? Carbon dioxide is a, is a non-pollutant. It's a natural, essential gas, makes up just 0.04% of our atmosphere, a trace gas, and without it would cause us to cease to exist. Plants need to grow, farmers enrich greenhouses with it, boost crops, more CO2 means more planet life, more food, and greener earth. Historically, CO2 levels have fluctuated well before cars, factories, or human influence. Ice cap data shows higher CO2 levels in the past naturally. Earth climate has always changed. What we're seeing today is not unprecedented, is part of a complex, multi-factual system involving sun, oceans, volcanic activity, not just tailpipes and gas stoves. Now about humans, now about humans contributing to CO2 levels, yes, to a degree, but it is cata, is it catastrophic? No, there's no consensus. Many credible scientists disagree with the climate emergency narrative, but we are told the science is settled and any dissent is labeled denial. That's not science, that's dogma. So why, why the push? Why force residents on e-scooters and e-bikes? It's not about saving the planet, it's about behavior modification, about reshaping society under the guise of sustainability. Councilman Dan Brotman may believe he's saving the earth, and he means well, it's his ideology, by taking away our cars, but I ask, at what cost? Our freedoms, our choices? I stand here for real environmental stewardship, not hysteria and not hypocrisy. Dan, buddy, I think your goose is cooked for 2026. I mean, you were, right from the dais here, you said you don't care if we believe in climate change. Let me remind the viewing public that you also were the only one that voted against tearing down the North Brand bike lanes. So your goose is cooked, you know, I would suggest you move into New York and get a job at the C, the UN, they'll listen to you over there, I'm sure.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening, Council members, thank you for the invite. I am Greg Kurdoglanyan, owner of Montrose Jewelers, who's been in business since 1959. We are located in 2257 Honolulu Boulevard, and I'm here today to voice some concerns regarding a meeting the council had this afternoon for land zone changing ordinance, and that is an ordinance that can impact our city, our businesses, and especially the ordinance is regarding Lot 7, I'm sorry, Lot 3 and Lot 7. We have 180 small mom-and-pop merchants on Montrose, on Honolulu, and if for some reason these zoning ordinance pass, and assuming in the future there'll be developments like condos or multi-use in these parking lots, I can assure you, me and most of those small mom-and-pop stores will go out of business. So I am very concerned about the zoning, which is gonna impact, if it ever goes through, a concerned businessman, a concerned citizen, and I lived in Glendale for the last 40 years, and all my colleagues on Honolulu are very concerned about this, and I would appreciate for the council to really think about this issue because the parking is so vital for our businesses, and Montrose is the jewel of Glendale, and the parking is very vital for our seniors, and they are the heart and soul of Montrose. We have a lot of seniors, and if we don't have that back parking lot, most of our businesses will go out of business because we have nowhere to park, and Honolulu doesn't provide enough parking for 180 shops. So I encourage the council to think about this further, for the future of Montrose and the businesses, and not go through this zone change ordinance because it will be harmful for our community. Thank you very much.
Next is Andre Ordebagan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Andre Ordebagan, president of Montrose Shopping Park Association, and a merchant in the association for the past 35 years. I'm here today to talk about the land zone, zoning changes that you spoke this afternoon at 3 o'clock in your special meeting. The land use zoning changes might sound like a good idea, but it often creates more problems than it solves. In Montrose, our parking lots are vital to the community, local merchants depend on them. Losing those spaces could put small businesses at serious risk, and as you may know, running a brick-and-mortar business is already tough enough. Any zoning changes that threaten their livelihood are simply uncalled for. We need more accessibility, not less. Please leave Montrose alone, and I just want to add, we have so many events in Montrose, and I don't understand, when you guys do an outreach, how come you haven't used our Arts and Crafts Festival, which 30,000-plus people show up, or our car show, which thousands of people showed up last week? There were no outreach done by City of Glendale. I don't know who does those outreach, and, you know, better yet, we have our Montrose Harvest Market, which takes place every Sunday from 9:00 to 2:00. We'll be happy, gladly provide you a booth that you can do your outreach over there and find out exactly what the people, the residents, the merchants, and the community thinks about all these things that it comes in front of you for approval. And, you know, lastly, I just want to add, why are we spending so much money on these studies, which we already know the outcome, we already know the answers to all of these things? So please reconsider, don't let any kind of a zone change goes to these areas. These are very detrimental to the livelihood of all these merchants in here in Montrose. So Montrose doesn't need any zone changes if it has been, I've been fighting for parking since 1992. I have met with Mayor Najarian eight, nine years ago, bringing up the parking issues that we have over there, and still hasn't resolved, and now we're hearing that there might be something that might, makes us lose our parking stalls. Please, please reconsider it and leave Montrose alone. I would really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Glendale YIMBY.
Hello, City Council. Again, my name is Shane Lee. I'm with Glendale YIMBY. We're a pro-housing organization. So for that reason, we support Senate Bill 79, and we're somewhat disappointed that Glendale has officially opposed it. You did officially oppose it, but then the city dropped their opposition, which is great, but then I've heard that they're opposing it again. I think that SB 79 is exactly the type of bill that would help our city build more housing. We're building that new BRT, which I'm super excited about, and I thank you for your leadership for building that. And if we could build a lot of like mid-rise apartments next to those BRT stops, if we're easy, like if we're an easy zone change, that would add hundreds of residents, lots of taxpayers, lots of people patronizing our businesses. It's the exact type of bill we need, because we're gonna have a beautiful transit line, BRT, running right through our city very soon. And also, we have that MetroLink in the south, we could build dozens of brand-new, beautiful mid-rise apartments there as well with SB 79, and so I would encourage you to officially support it rather than opposing it, or you could just remain neutral, but opposing it would be good. Let's see. Yeah, that's all. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Does that conclude?
That concludes this portion, yes.
Okay, I have a special request by Councilmember Asaturian for an announcement.
I was waiting for clarification, but just wanted to invite everybody out to the swearing and ceremony for our fire chief, Jeff Brooks. It's going to take place on July 31st, 9:00 AM. There'll be refreshments, and then 9:30 PM, 9:30 AM will be the official ceremony, so if you're able to, please join us. It'll be at Fire Station 21.
Thank you. Well, I think the communications went pretty smoothly this time. Next item, please.
Next are action items. The first item is City Clerk regarding consideration of supportive state bills recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women. One motion providing supportive bills as recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women.
Madam Clerk.
Yes. Let me pull up the PowerPoint. We do have one speaker card as of now. Staff seeks City Council's direction on support for legislation recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women. As an advisory board to the City Council, one of the functions of the Commission on the Status of Women is policy recommendation. The Commission is committed to being informed about current and impending issues, policies, and legislation relevant to the well-being of women and girls in order to make recommendations of support or opposition on such issues, policies, and legislation to City Council. As part of this function, the Commission monitors legislation on the state and federal levels that impact and affect women and girls, and advises and advocates on these issues. At the July 14th special meeting, the Commission on the Status of Women discussed recommending supportive state bills to council for their approval on behalf of the City of Glendale. The list of bills that the Commission discussed are based on CSW's adopted legislative platform, which reflects the following priorities. Women in the workplace, women's health, women's safety, women in the budget, women in the military and military families, women in post-secondary education. On July 14th, 2025, CSW voted to recommend the following bills for support. AB 432, the Bauer-Kahen Menopause Care Equality Act Bill. This bill would require mandatory continuing medical education for certain providers in a course in peri-menopause, menopause, and post-menopausal care. The next bill was AB 495, the Rodriguez Bill, Family Preparedness Plan Act of 2025. This bill aims to strengthen and expand legal protections for families in the event of deportation actions, and would expand the type of person who is authorized to execute a caregiver's authorization affidavit to include a non-relative extended family member, and grant them the same rights as given to guardians to authorize school-related medical care. The following bill, the next bill is AB 788, the. The following bill, the next bill is AB 788, the Quark-Silva Bill, Rehabilitation and Safety for Incarcerated Women. This bill would create within the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation the Division of Female Programs and Services to be led by a director meeting specific qualifications to be responsible solely for female adult institutions and community facilities housing female offenders. AB 836, the Stefani Bill, Midwifery Education Landscape Analysis. This bill would require funding for statewide analysis to map the landscape of midwifery education and explore solutions to expand and diversify the midwifery workforce. SB 75, Smallwood Queva Bill, Women Prison Apprenticeship. This bill would launch a rehabilitation pilot in Los Angeles, Alameda, and San Diego counties by January 1st, 2028, and would provide incarcerated individuals access to a pre-apprenticeship training in the skilled construction and building trades until January 1st, 2032. SB 258, the WAHA Bill, is justice for disabled spouses. This bill would remove the spousal exception from the current definition of rape where the person is incapable of giving legal consent because of a mental disorder or developmental or physical disability. The final bill is SB 271, the RAIS Bill, transforming higher education for student parents through essential financial childcare support services. This bill would require each California State University and California Community College and request each University of California Financial Aid Office, Childcare Development Center, and Basic Needs Center to refer student parents to local resources to inform them on available services and resources. All of these bills were on the California Legislative Women's Caucus Priority List. And for questions, we have today with us our city lobbyist, Kira Ross, to answer any specific questions on and any of the bills. So with that, I will bring Kira on. And I think we're having some connection problems, so Kira might turn off her video so that she's able to speak.
Can you hear us, Kira?
Yes, yeah, I can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Madam Clerk, on these bills. Are there any questions or discussion from colleagues?
I'm good. There are, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
I do have a question. Just on one of the bills, on SB 258, Justice for Disabled Spouses. I understand that the ACLU and the Disability Rights, a group called Disability Rights California, I think, are both in opposition. Can you explain what the nature of their opposition is? It's somewhat concerning to see these two large reputable organizations being opposed to this bill.
Is that for you? Is that for Kira?
That's for Kira, yeah.
Kira, did you get the question?
Sure. I did, yes. So both of the groups are in opposition to the bill, and they noted that they believe that while they share the goal of preventing sexual violence, especially against people with disabilities, their concern is that the bill potentially has some unintended consequences for people with disabilities, specifically that they believe that the bill fails to truly represent and keep intellectual and developmental disability community safe. So they're concerned about potentially bringing on additional outdated and discriminatory assumptions about the capacity of people with developmental disabilities and that this bill may have unintended consequences because of that.
Okay. And what is our counter to that? Why would we, do we feel that those are unwarranted, those concerns?
Well, I'm not sure.
I don't know who would answer that.
So would that be, is someone from the Commission here? Or Madam Clerk, can you address whether those concerns were significant to your, to the Commission's recommendation?
Those concerns were raised by one of the commissioners, and this bill passed basically with two votes to one abstention. There were three commissioners at the special meeting. And because of this controversy or unintended consequences, rather, one of the commissioners abstained from voting on this bill.
Councilmember Asaturian?
Are the groups opposing the bill, or are they opposing unless amended?
Opposing.
Strictly, okay. So at least for me, on SB 258, unless you can, Kira, can you delve a little deeper into the concerns or the unintended consequences? If not, then I would hesitate to support without having additional information on that.
I think, you know, the groups, as I understand it, haven't gotten a whole lot deeper. The concern is a fairly broad concern that the bill could create unintended consequences because it does broaden the definition of rape. And so I think the concern is on a, from a longer-term perspective, that you could get cases where people would be unintentionally charged, that maybe they have a developmental disability. So I don't believe that there is an amendment that they are seeking. It's just a straight opposition.
I have no other questions. I'm fine with everything else.
Okay. Should we bifurcate that separately? If you have any, if you have any questions, Mr. Carpetian, let's, okay, so, so why don't we move other cards? Okay, let's.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Sure.
So, Kira, the, the bill is asking or is exempting spouses from rape, or it's creating an exemption for people with disabilities?
It's exempting spouses, but the concern is that you could have somebody that has a developmental disability, that is a spouse that could fall into that category.
Okay, all right. I would like to, yeah, if everyone else is okay with it, I would want to pull that.
We do have a card?
Yes, we have one speaker on this item, Mike Mohill. You have three minutes.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. You know, we don't have any money in this city. We're in the red. Why are we supporting this organization, the Women's Commission? Women are doing very well in the City of Glendale and throughout the country. They're captains of industry. They're, President Trump, his chief of staff is a woman. There's women in Congress and Senate, you name it. What we do need is a commission for men because they are losing ground to women. In fact, women are so successful, they don't even have a date on Saturday night because they can't find a qualified man. That's not funny, Ms. Asaturian, but it's the truth, isn't it? Okay? We already have captains in the industry. Women have the right to vote. You know, why not, let's have an old man's commission. I'll be the captain. This isn't, this isn't funny. This is serious. City has no, look, you just went through passing the budget and you said, we don't have any money. Let's waste it on a women's commission. How much, Mayor Najarian, how much does the city spend to keep this commission going? How much? The public would like to know that number. Because, you know, I'm going without, you raise my electric rates, my water rates, my trash fees. What for? To run the city? Well, your job is to make sure you spend the money the right way. And a women's commission is a luxury, is a luxury. Women in Glendale are doing very, very well. Councilman Vartan Garpedian, when this subject came up some time ago, gave a list of all the successful men and, excuse me, women. I wrote about them in my newsletter some time ago. So again, why? How much are we spending on this commission? I would like to know that because, you know what? I want, I want the public to know, why are we spending money on a, on a feel-good commission for some women who want to feel good? How about a feel-good commission for men, older men? After all, I need a job too. I need a commission. When do I get my commission? I'm going to be the president of the commission. This is not funny. I'm being serious. I'm mocking it for a reason. Like, city manager, how much are we spending for this commission? Please, can you tell the public?
After you're through speaking, Mr. Mohill, we may have an answer.
I got 15 seconds to wait. Maybe our, maybe our city attorney knows how much we're spending. How much money are we spending for this commission? Thank you.
If anyone from staff or my colleagues have that number, you don't have to answer it, but if you'd like to put it forward.
I'm happy to. I've brought this up many of times. We actually don't allocate any funding from our budget for women's and girls' programming. The Commission on the Status of Women does have currently a 50% staff that's supposed to be allocated to it, but as a matter of fact, that position has been vacant, and that is why you're seeing Dr. Abadjan be the one to present, even though that's not her duty. And so there is about, I think, $80,000 in the account, if I'm not mistaken. $15,000 of that was donated by Crusoe for the Women's Equality Day that's coming up. The remaining of the funds were actually raised by the Commission on the Status of Women for, from various events and grants that they had applied for, and so none of that has actually come from the budget. But, Mr. Mohill, if you would like to start an old man's commission or committee, which I think you'd be a great chair for, I'm sure that there are other older men in the community that need that support, and we look forward to your leadership.
At my age or older, trust me.
Thank you.
I'll ask my dad.
Any other cards on this?
No, that is all.
Okay. Why don't we take SB 258 separately? Would someone like to move the balance of the legislation?
I will move the balance.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asaturian?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Would someone like to move endorsement of SB 258?
I'll move SB 258.
I, why are we moving that separate?
There may be some no votes on that.
I would, okay, I'm not going to be separating.
The rest of the cast, then, someone if they were.
Okay.
So there's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, there is no, there are no seconds, so that dies for lack of a second. Thank you. Next item.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I thought there was another element to this, something having to do with Camp Rosie.
I, I can address that if I.
Because I was, I was asked by a member of the public, please support the funds for Camp Rosie, and city manager told me it was part of this item.
I was going to raise that because I had forwarded, so Debra, who was the executive director for the YMCA, YWCA, had reached out noting that they don't have funding for Camp Rosie for this year. I had asked for line items to pass on to staff. I recognize that the Commission on the Status of Women had brought that up during their last meeting, of which they've allocated, I believe, $2,000 to donate to Camp Rosie. But there's additional, I don't know if there was any recommendation that came from the Commission for us to further support beyond whatever you allocated from your, your budget.
There was no further recommendation from the Commission. The Commission voted to donate $2,000 from their own account to Camp Rosie. And.
We don't need to get involved.
Okay, so that's not for us? Okay.
It's all from their funding.
That's all from their funding. It's not, it's not from the city funds.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, so that wasn't, they had a special meeting that wasn't on their agenda. They didn't allocate their own funding.
That's right.
Which we, which they're entitled to.
For the record, the email that I did receive from YWCA asked for roughly $9,000, and I had noted that, let the Commission take it up, and then if there's further need for them to reach out to council in general.
No, word, Mr. Mayor, this is not part of our, our agenda today, this discussion.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Right now, it's a point of clarification as to whether that item is on the agenda.
No. It's not on the agenda because it doesn't require council action.
Okay.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, very good. Let's move on to the next item.
Next is Action Item B, Fire Department Regarding Introduction of an Ordinance Adopting the 2025 Local Responsibility Area Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps as Recommended by the California State Fire Marshal. Introduction of Ordinance.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council. So the city is required to adopt, at a minimum, the areas designated by Cal Fire no later than July 24th of this year. Under these maps, the number of parcels classified within the Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zone will increase by 7,410. And I'll invite Chief Brooks to provide you more details in his brief presentation and answer your questions.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Again, this is the introduction of an ordinance adopting the 2025 Local Responsibility Area Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps. Local Responsibility Area is saying the City of Glendale, having its own fire department, is responsible for the adoption of those maps and presenting the ordinance. So what is a fire hazard severity zone? It's areas identified by the State Fire Marshal as moderate, high, and very high hazard severity zones. This is based on modeling and things across the state that they use to look at the severity of fire hazard that is suspected to prevail in those areas. So now, with all the data available, they can look at modeling and mapping based on fire history and predicted fire based on certain criteria, wind, terrain, et cetera. The wire fire hazard severity map's being updated. It's really to more accurately reflect the zones in California that are susceptible to wildfire, and this new process incorporates that science and local climate data in improved fire assessment modeling and determining hazard ratings. Again, these maps haven't been updated since 2011. The maps for our area were released on March 24th of 2025. We had a, an opportunity to provide a period for public comment and review as mandated by the state. And really, today is an interview, an overview of the introduction of the ordinance adopting the 2025 Local Responsibility Area Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps as recommended. Like we see with the building codes, we have to adopt at minimum what the state has presented. If we wanted to go further and more heightened, we could do that. We can't lessen what they've presented. So on the left here, you see a map with the black outline is the City of Glendale. See our neighbors up to the left in Los Angeles, Lock and Yoda to the top, Los Angeles again to the bottom. All the red is the Very High Fire Hazard Severity, and then it goes down to moderate zones from there. If you look at the right, the lined area is the old Very High Fire Hazard area in Glendale. Anything that you see outside of that in the pinkish-red and the yellow is what has been added. So you can see on the north end, from Duke Magian down, that moves down more towards the 210. Below the 210, it moves up towards the 210. An area of the 2 freeway that used to not be included is now included in that. And then areas, I'll use kind of that area along Brand Park, that now comes all the way down towards Glen Oaks Boulevard where it used to stop up around Mountain. So again, the city manager said, we currently inspect 8,973 parcels in the Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zone with a new map update that adds an additional 7,410 parcels, which will bring our total to 16,383 parcels we inspect. Those new inspections don't begin until next year. So for this year, we're still at the 8,973. What does that look like? Property owners in the Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zones are subject to annual inspections, and they receive notices. Early in the year, we send out notices for abatement, and if brush clearance or other fire safety requirements are not met, and again, that's in accordance with state and our local prevention standards. So our next steps, as we move forward from here, again, tonight is the introduction of the ordinance. Next council would be to adopt the ordinance. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Keith, so that area that used to be between, not used to be, that is between Verdugo and Cuyahoga did not used to be a Very High.
Yeah, there's.
The island, I don't know what they call, there's a term.
Yeah, so I mean, it used to be Very High Fire Hazard Severity, and that's why I say kind of in that outlined striped area, you can see what it was. So a significant impact to Glendale. Again, if we look at the City of Glendale, about 63% of this city is in what we call the wild and urban interface. So a big area of our city was already incorporated in that. And so now with the new data, what they're able to do is look at Amber Cast and things like that. Should you have an incident like the Eaton Fire, what would the impacts be to Glendale? Of note of interest, these maps were done before the Eaton and the Palisades fires. So this is just saying, based on predictive modeling, what the potential is for our city So this is just saying, based on predictive modeling, what the potential is for our city as far as risk.
Thank you. Colleagues, Mr. Brotman.
Just, just one question. So this will bring us to 16,383 parcels.
Yes, sir.
How many are there altogether? What percentage is that of the city of all the parcels?
Oh, I don't have that number. I can get back to you on that, as far as total parcels in the entire city versus what the 16,000 is?
Yeah, I'm wondering what, you know, is it 70% of the city or 50, you know, well... No, I guess it's not, because it's all, because we have pretty much most of South Glendale, which has a lot more parcels.
Yeah, I mean, again, when you're at 7,900 homes, basically, is what you added in addition to what we already had. But, I mean, Adams Hill and things that weren't in before are now added in that zone, so... I mean, it's a significant impact when we look at what's happened in our immediate area and our neighbors, not near the amount of impact that we're seeing in Glendale. But again, that's based on so much of the city and how the topography is situated, that there is a risk and a threat.
Okay, well, somebody could get back to us. It's a nice factoid to have, you know, what percentage of our parcels now are classified as high severity?
Sure, we're happy to follow up on that.
We do have a speaker.
Yes, we do.
Let's hear from the speaker.
Mike Mohill? You have three minutes, Mike.
Well, I'm giving some discretion due to the newness of this, and perhaps, I don't want to say the age, but the slow pace, the slow gait of Mr. Mohill. Please, go ahead, Mr. Mohill. We're learning as we go, and I hope you're learning too. If you want to speak, make sure you get that card in earlier.
You know, it never used to be that way, was it? Remember?
It's a new, it's called new. Ever heard of new?
I know.
It's a new rule.
It's, it's, turn the hands of the public. You don't want any public comment. That's what you, it was that way before, and it's this way now. You haven't changed.
We can start. Go ahead, Mr. Mohill.
Okay, let's talk about our new fire chief, Gon, Brooks. I'd like to congratulate him for being our new chief. It certainly is refreshing to have a new, a new fire chief who doesn't have a bad record behind him.
It's off-topic, Mr. Mayor.
I know it's off-comment, but it's nice to make a comment that's positive, and that's what I'm trying to do.
I know, but let's, we appreciate your nice comments. We can hold, pause the clock. We appreciate them. So this is about the fire map and introduction of an ordinance that Glendale will be adopting these areas as high fire hazards.
Yes, and our new fire chief will make sure we implement those things, because, you know, he has a, you know, kind of a head. He's smart, he's intelligent, went to school, has an education, and it's nice to see somebody who has a clean record before our city council. And for that, again, I want to congratulate our fire chief, and I can't wait to go to his opening, what, he's going to have a luncheon soon?
We'll let you know, Mr. Mohill. The invitation is in the mail.
Hope so.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Okay, were there any other cards submitted timely, or?
No other cards for this item, or calls.
Councilmember Asatirian.
Chief? What's the plan for community education on all of this?
So, right now, the primary would be our website, and then any outreach we've done on our social media. But if you go to the website, we've really laid out the history of how this came about, and the website has all the information on what the impacts of the mapping are, what the next steps are, and what it looks like.
Do people have to take additional precautions, prepare differently? Are all of those things going to be part of your communications plan from maybe a prevention side?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, that's a big part of this. We also have a grant we're in the process for, so we can further enhance our outreach. But I mean, that's, a big component of this is education and outreach, and that's kind of the next step. First piece was get to the point of the introduction of the ordinance, adopt the ordinance, and then move from there forward as far as education and outreach.
Thank you. Would someone like to?
Introduction.
Introduce the...
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Introduced by Councilmember Asatirian. Next item, please.
Next item would be item number C, Fire Department Teleflex Medical Supply Corporation. One, Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding, Establishing Teleflex Medical Supplies Corporation as a city standard vendor for the purchase of intra-ocseous medical equipment and supplies, and authorizing the deputy director finance purchasing to procure related equipment and supplies.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council. So our fire department is asking your approval, council's approval, to designate Teleflex as the exclusive vendor for intra-ocseous medical device solutions, and to dispense with competitive bidding for equipment and supplies. This will ensure to maintain an uninterrupted supply of IO equipment used by our paramedics in the treatment of critical life-threatening patient conditions. Teleflex equipment has been used by the fire department for almost 10 years, and has proven to be reliable, easy to use, competitively priced, and is considered the gold standard in this field. If you have any questions, Chief Brooks is available.
Mayor, I do have a card for this item.
Let's take the card. Okay, but it's not a love fest, Mr. Mohill. Are you up next? Save that for general communication.
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
No, this is different, this is 9D.
Okay, let's call the speaker.
What's 9C? Did I give you one on 9C?
Yes, yes. Is there a speaker on 9C?
It is Mr. Mohill.
Mr. Mohill, you're up. Keep on topic, please.
Well, let me, let me praise our new chief again. Why not? It's a pleasure to have a chief that's responsible. He doesn't have a bad record. We went through, you know, I won't, I won't mention names, but we all on council know, we had a bad history. And it's nice to have a fire chief, and you know what? He's also sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
You're welcome.
Chief, don't you have one of those little badges you can give to Mr. Mohill to show his support of the fire department? There you go. Perfect, perfect. No, thank you, Mr. Mohill, thank you.
Let me, if you can see my badge.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Next, please. Chief, I have a question. I didn't make it to med school. It's a long story. Intra-ocseous means through the bone, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So, what, in what situation would this type of equipment be used?
Really, anything. If we have trouble gaining IV access, intravenous access, and we're unsuccessful in one to two attempts, obviously, time is tissue, and we need to get IV access, we would move to the intra-ocseous. So that's the tibial tuberosity, better kind of known as your shinbone area, or the humerus up in the arm. We can go in either one of those places as approved per LA County.
It's injected directly into the bone.
So if someone's having a heart attack, you can't gain IV access, or super dehydrated, veins aren't super accessible, any situations like that, it really moves us to that next phase of being able to administer medications in a timely manner.
Okay, and it's a sole source? You have no problems with the fact it's a sole source?
It really helps us. We've been using that product for about 10 years. There's certain components, just like a little tiny drill motor that fits in your hand that drills into the bone with that. So there's a big component of training that the organization went through when we brought this onboard. So outside of this would be really starting back at square one.
Okay. Thank you, and you have personal experience with this?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Chief. Are there any other questions on this? Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatirian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Carpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? And Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is item number D, Public Works Preservation and Reuse of the former Rock Haven Sanatorium Project. One, Motion Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Execute a Construction Contract with ARC Construction Incorporated for the preservation and reuse of the former Rock Haven Sanatorium project in the amount of $6,422,796, plus a 10% contingency of $642,000. Two, Motion Authorizing the City Manager or His Designee to Execute a Construction Contract with ARC Construction Incorporated for the preservation and reuse of the former Rock Haven Sanatorium project in the amount of $6,730,025, plus a 10% contingency of $673,000. Resolution, number three, is Resolution Appropriation to Appropriate Funds for the Preservation and Reuse of the former Rock Haven Sanatorium Project for Tier One, Option One. Four, Resolution Appropriation to Appropriate Funds for the Preservation and Reuse of the former Rock Haven Sanatorium Project for Tier One, Two, and Three, Option Number Two.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council. This project's been in the works for a while, and will renovate the Pines Cottage for use as a museum, plus accessibility improvements to the Rock Haven grounds, and an off-site parking, which is a comprehensive effort to enhance the site's historical and functional value. Staff is seeking council's approval to award a construction contract based on two options that was read into the record, both of which will require a resolution of appropriation. With that, I'll turn it over to Arthur Asatirian, our senior project manager in charge of this project, and Mark Berry with CDD is also available, if you have any questions for him. Mr. Asatirian?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of council. If I go through my presentation too quickly, please don't hesitate to stop me and ask questions. My name is Arthur Asatirian, Senior Project Manager of Public Works. I'm here to present the award for the preservation and reuse of former Rock Haven Sanatorium project. Public Works has taken over this project delivery from Community Development, who have done a tremendous job moving this, this effort forward to a point where we are now preparing to award a construction contract. In May, we received a bid from ARC Construction in an amount of $6,730,025, covering the full scope of work across all three tiers, previously approved by council. Additionally, back in March, we awarded a contract to Maestro, a construction management firm, who's here to help us out throughout this endeavor in an amount of $304,730. Currently, the available balance of the $8 million state grant stands at $6,928,66. This number assumes that we will be removing the remaining scope from SWA, the architectural firm who's designed this project for us. The portion that we plan on removing is, is additional scope that is outside of this project. This evening, I'll present two options to council for their consideration. Oh, sorry. Option One, we will award, we're planning on, if you were to choose, to award Tier One only. ARC has provided a base bid amount of $6,422,796, which includes 10% contingency, $642,000. This would have an additional appropriation of $441,460. To help manage the costs to the general fund, staff have identified potential savings through a deductive change order to remove $400,000 planting line item from the contractor's bid. We've spoken with the contractor, and he has agreed to this option. Planting, planting materials will instead be purchased and installed in-house by our parks crews, with opportunities for the community involvement. Additionally, any unused contingency funds will be returned back to the general fund. So in that sense, if we were to go with Option One, and using, and doing a deductive change order with the $400,000, the hit to the general fund would be about $41,000 also. And then, any additional contingency that's not used will go back to the general fund as well. Tier One, I'm pretty sure you guys are all familiar with from past council meetings, includes majority of, of the three and a half acre lot, as well as the Pines Cottage renovation. So the general scope would, would cover this, this portion. Option Two would then be to award all three tiers. However, this, this amount is roughly $300,000 more than the previous option. Again, the, the cost savings will be similar to Option One, doing the $400,000 deductive change order, as well as removing the additional portion of SWA's contract. Going with Option Two, the hit that we would take on the general fund is $779,689. However, if, after, after the deductive change order, we're looking at about $380,000 of general fund usage. Additionally, any unused contingency items would, will go back as well. This next slide shows all three tiers. The Pines Cottage renovation, irrigation and planting throughout the facility, as well as ADA access paths to all, all of the remaining facilities that are not part of the project. At this time, I'll conclude my presentation and open for any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers?
Mayor and council members, I do have two cards.
And the first speaker is?
First speaker is Alan Durham. Alan, you have three minutes.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak on this. I'll be brief. I just wanted to tell you my support for this project at Rock Haven. I know that there have been, with all due respect to friends of Rock Haven, there have been issues about what the museum space should be, what the museum should be. I've attended the presentations by the various consultants doing the planning, and I, I thought their ideas for the museum space were excellent, and therefore, I'd like to see this move forward. It's very urgent. I believe that if all this work isn't completed by March 1st of 2026, that we will lose the funding from the state grant of $8 million. What hasn't been used. So it's been a long time coming, and I'm afraid that if it gets delayed any further, we're going to run out of time and potentially lose grant money from the state. I'd also like to express my support for Option Two. Doing the additional work on Tiers Two and Three will help bring Rock Haven back and make it more inviting, more accessible to the public. I think, you know, getting, being able to get the public back into the site's very important in terms of the community being able to visit, use it, and support it in the future. And currently, without this work, no one can go to Rock Haven because it's not ADA compliant. It's not safe for people to visit. But I think now is the time to go on and do Tiers Two and Three. It'll only get more expensive in the future, and I think, you know, probably adding those tiers on, it's a good time to do it when you're doing the rest of the work. It tends to be cheaper than doing it separately further down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Mohill?
Oh, no, no, don't, now, don't start talking about Chief Brooks, okay? Mr. Mohill, you have three minutes.
Evening, council members. Name is Mike Mohill. You know, when Rock Haven was first discussed as a possible museum, it goes back, I believe, the year was about 2009 or '10, when John Draymond was around on council. And I was against this project back then. But since then, I've turned, I've come around, and I support what's gone on at Rock Haven. What's disappointing right now is where, where is Joanna? What's disappointing right now is where is Joanna? Why isn't she here? I don't know. You know, did someone, does she not know this is going on tonight? Can't say, who knows? But, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what your finances will be on this, but I just know that it's a gem to have it. It should be a museum. It has long history of the Crescent Valley. And again, I'm troubled. Is Joanne sick? She should be here tonight, thanking the city council, because she's been at this thing forever. So I hope you all do the right thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mohill supporting women's history.
What is it?
We're good. Thank you, thank you for supporting women's history, Mr. Mohill.
Well, there's, there's a, I got my time. There's a reason I support it, because there's a good purpose behind it.
Thank you.
It's not a feel-good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a feel-good thing. It's a real thing, because there were women there as a sanitarium, as you know. In fact, the famous Mary Monroe's mother was there. Do you know that history?
We may have a position for you as a docent that opens up.
I'm going to be nice to you tonight.
Thank you.
After all you are.
Mr. Moh, Mr. Mohill, thank you, thank you. Let's cut it there. Thank you very much. Any other cards?
Mayor, there are no more cards.
Any comments from, Mr. Galanian, can you please, let me just ask you a question. Please, please punctuate the difference in the costs and where the funding is going to come from. And is it already budgeted? Is any of it budgeted at this point?
Well, thank you, Mayor Nagerian. As you know, we did receive a grant from the state previously in the amount of $8 million, I believe. Let's see, get my notes, sorry.
Do you want to call a friend?
So the contractor for option one, the cost was $6.4 million and change. You see it on the slide. Typically, add a 10% construction contingency, which is $642,000, and a third-party construction management, $304,000 and change. That brings the total to $7.369 million, okay? The balance left in the state grant is $6.928, and staff has been able to reduce the scope of services for S W A, the consultant, the design consultant, by 434. So the appropriation for option one that we need is $441,460. However, as was stated earlier, the balancing strategy to have the minimal impact on the required appropriation is that with our own parks crew, we may be able to save $400,000 in landscape savings, and the appropriation will be 41, the net appropriation down the road, $41,460. That wasn't budgeted.
That was not.
Was not.
But we could possibly save 400 of that through our own landscaping.
Correct.
And in the event that there's unused contingency, that would also be used to cover it.
Yes, contingency is reserved for unforeseen conditions, and sometimes they're not totally utilized.
Okay, and then compare that to option two, if you would.
Option two, which is tiers one, two, and three, same breakdown, but obviously, the base cost is higher, at $6.7, $6,730,000. The contingency, 10% contingency is slightly higher, and the rest remain the same. In this case, the appropriation we need is $779,689. Again, like you mentioned, there's a potential for $400,000 landscape savings and unused contingency, and in that case, $380,000 approximately.
So the question here is, I'm not sure if, how reasonable it is to rely and to anticipate that all the unused contingency, or any of it, would be available at the end of the project. Typically, construction projects do run into unforeseen issues, change orders, site conditions, et cetera. How much extra are we getting, if you could, maybe Mr. Asaturian, if we went to options, option two, which is completing tiers one, two, and three for the extra $300,000 or something that it's costing? What are we getting for that? If we went all in, you know, deluxe version, what extra amenities are we getting in tiers two and three in this project?
Option two provides additional landscaping, irrigation and landscaping that it is, so basically, the blue is option one. Green would be option two, is the landscaping in that area. Then option three is the ADA pathways to, throughout the facility.
Additional ADA pathways.
Correct. The Pines Cottage would have a pathway, the museum would have one. However, the rest of the facility would not, if we were not to consider tier three.
So it would be additional. Would we be complying with ADA as long as there is access to Pines College? Cottage with the?
Yes, to the Pines Cottage, from Honolulu on to the Pines Cottage, yes.
So three gives us additional ADA capacity.
And that would be in preparation in case there are plans to utilize the other buildings.
So in the future, if you want to use those buildings, you'll have to have that. So the question is, do you want to pay for it now, or do you want to pay for it later? And you might get some economies of scale doing it now.
Council member Asaturian.
We have the funds available, why would we not just do tier three? And call it a day, I mean, construction costs and everything else goes up with time.
So currently, we are short, if we do options one through three, we're short $780,000.
That's how much we need appropriation for.
And then, when we, once awarded the contract, we'll do a deductive change order with the contractor, remove $400,000 of the planting portion.
So technically, like, so you said $380,000, right?
$380,000 is what we would ask for.
And if we did choose option three, Mr. Galanian, is that coming out of our general fund, or is that coming, it's already budgeted for?
It's not budgeted for, that's why we're asking for appropriation.
Mr. Carpetti, yeah? Questions?
Yes. Do they, the contractors, do they give us a breakdown of their bid, or just give us a lump sum bid, and they said, give us a number and say this is it? Because how big is the cottage, the Pine Cottage, the square footage?
I'd have to refer to Mr. Mark Berry.
Let me ask a few questions. How many linear foot of concrete pads do we have with tier three? Give and take. How big is the cottage, and how much irrigations are we going to have for the three landscape areas?
Council member, I can answer one of those questions, and that's the size of the Pines Cottage. It's about 32 to 3300 square feet. The linear footage of the sidewalk, that I do not know.
Okay, because I think in this case, I mean, $7 million, $8 million for this job is a big number. I think we all would agree, but in this case, they knew what our budget was, basically, right? Because we constantly talked about how much money we have left, and how much money we have left, and because for 3300 square foot, I understand they have to go with the Secretary of Interior and the historic preservation part of it to rehab the cottage, and it needs a lot of work, we all know that, we've seen the inside of the building. But $7 million, $6.8, $7.7 million for this kind of a project, I think we have to find the formula for our projects, basically. I understand it's not, you know, your hand, you just deal with the bids that come in, but somehow, the public sector jobs are almost twice as much as the private sector. I mean, no one in private sector will pay you $8 million to do this, this kind of just landscaping and grading and what have you, remodeling of this one, one building.
That is accurate, Councilman Carpetti. You did mention it, that almost 50% is the cost of prevailing wage that Public Works projects will have to pay the labor force, in addition to the private sector. That's a mandate, state mandate.
No, I understand that they have to have prevailing wage, but I don't think it's 50% of the cost of the project.
Oh, it is, 45% or so.
So you're telling me that 40% of the, let's round it up, 8 million is cost of labor?
More than likely, yeah.
I highly respectfully challenge that, but we'll talk about it, that's nothing, nothing that we can. Yeah, I have to mention, the second bid is 8.5 million. Oh, I understand, I understand. That's the industry. That's what I'm saying, it's, the public sector jobs are a lot higher than the private sector, and the cost of labor is not 40, 50, but we'll, we'll talk about that. We have a decision to make here today. I think I would go for option two to have one, two, three, all of it done. So the other thing I would like to mention is the current structures that we have, the other structures that we have, they're deteriorating. We need to find a way, maybe to seal the roofs. So I know we have a tarp on most of them, so they will stop deteriorating. And also, we talked about this at the other briefings, that in the future, if you want to use those buildings, we need to have utilities, water, and power. Most of them have it, but make sure that we can, we can upgrade them easier, so we don't have to tear up what we built today, and then come back tomorrow and say, oh my God, I have to tear this area up to run a line or something. That's up to the staff to take a look at it and see what infrastructure do we need to bury in the ground right now, maybe stop out pipes or what have you, so in the future, they can, they can, they can be utilized. But I think we, this is, this has been in works for decades. I think we need to get it done and move forward, so open it to the community, at least they can use one of the buildings as a museum, and the rest of the site can be utilized as a park. I would be in favor of option two, that awards tier one, two, and three.
Mr. Brotman, and then?
Yeah, I agree. I think the way I look at it is, we're either spending $440,000 to provide limited access to the area, to the Pines Cottage, but, you know, some of the grounds, but not, not all the grounds, right? Or we could spend $340,000 more, and we have public access to most of the, of the grounds. So that's the question, $340,000. I know we can maybe make that, we can get some of that back and all that, but $340,000 is the difference. When I spoke to staff yesterday, I was told that doing tier, doing it all together could save as much as $100,000, because you're doing one bid, you're not doing multiple, what are called mobilization and demobilization, the traffic control, set up and breakdown equipment, everything. So to do it all at once, potentially saving up to $100,000 for something we're probably going to eventually want to do, to me, it makes sense to do it all now. So I'm on the same page with Mr. Carpetti, and I think Councilmember Asaturian also.
Councilmember Asaturian, is that true?
That is absolutely true. Yeah, I think it's way overdue. I do want to take this opportunity to pose, I know that some years ago, they were, you either did an R F P for the, for the site in general, or were planning to do it. Where, where is that? I know as we're talking about this, I keep thinking about, Mr. Berry had taken me on for a tour a while ago, and there's like so much potential for the remaining property. Is there a thought from staff on putting an R F P out to see what we get from the community? What was it like before?
Mayor and council members, that would be the next step. We would come back to council and have a discussion regarding those uses. Considering public engagement, most importantly, I think we would like to do an economic analysis to also understand what that market could bear and how those spaces could be used. If you recall, I think when we started this process, we had a discussion with council of what kind of uses you may want to see there. It was a pretty broad gamut, so I think we need to kind of narrow that in and get some expert opinion on that. That will also inform us what kind of improvements need to be made to each of those buildings as well.
Okay, and it's for me, I really think we have to be more fiscally conservative on this. I understand there may be added value by doing all of the tiers together, but in light of coming off our budget situation, I just would feel that going with the more modest scope would be the best way to do it. But that's, that's just my opinion. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
One question. As far as campaign disclosure goes, why is this one exempt from campaign disclosure requirement?
Councilman Carpetti, so items that are subject to lowest responsible bid are exempt because, that's in our ordinance, those types of bids are exempt from our campaign finance
I'm moving D two and D four.
That's correct, isn't it? D two and D four, yeah.
That is correct.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asaturian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetti.
Yes.
Kusakian. And Mayor Nagerian.
No. Next item, please.
Next item is E. Public Works Resolution Regarding Financial Assurance for Post-Closure Maintenance of Shoal Canyon Landfill, Glendale, California, and Authorizing the City Manager or Is Designated to Enter Into An Execute a Pledge of Revenue Agreement. One Resolution Regarding Financial Assurance for Post-Closure Maintenance of Shoal Canyon Landfill, Glendale, California, and Authorizing the City Manager or Is Designated to Enter Into An Execute a Pledge of Revenue Agreement. And I do have one card for this item.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Nagerian, I'm a member of city council. As you may know, after closure of the landfill, new requirements will kick in that include a closure and post-closure maintenance plan, and evidence of the financial ability to provide for maintenance in an amount equal to the estimated cost of the closure and 30 years of post-closure maintenance. The city had previously established a separate landfill post-closure fund. However, staff has negotiated a pledge of revenue agreement with CalRecycle to demonstrate financial responsibility for the post-closure maintenance plan. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Luke Chen, our senior civil engineer, who's in charge of the landfill, to provide this presentation and respond to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, mayor and council member. My name is Luke Chen. I'm going.
Can we have you speak into the microphone, please?
All righty. Excuse me for that. So this is for the pledge of revenue for the post-closure maintenance for Shoal Canyon Landfill. The pledge of revenue is a financial plan to show that's how the city will meet the long-term, 30-years post-closure obligations for Shoal Canyon Landfill. So for the summary, you can see currently, the projected closure date is between, sometime between December 2028 to April 2029. We have about 1 million tons left, so basically, four and a half years. From the state regulatory requirements, we must, the city must ensure 30 years of post-closure maintenance for groundwater, for all the vinyl cover, for the wastewater resource, for those maintenance measures per the Public Resource Code, 43501. Currently, the trust fund city has by end of May is $62.4 million, and the CalRecycle gave us a minimum requirement of 71, so that's about $9 million deficit. Deficit, so we propose a action to pledge 289.6 million dollars for 30 years, which is based on 87 post-closure liability costs over 30 years. So that's the 2025 dollar value, 71 million is the minimum value. So plus, we have another 1.3 million to be reserved for the corrective action in case any emergency happened in a capital project fund for Shoal Canyon landfill. We do have two alternatives. The first one is we do not enter into the pledge of revenue agreement with CalRecycle and we continue depositing about 9 million dollars, the required funds, into the trust fund annually. And this alternative will require immediately 9 million to cure the deficit by increasing the 62 trust fund balance to the minimum required 71. However, the, the total 30 years PCM request is 87, so we need to pledge 2.89 for 30 years. So the next step we suggest is to execute the pledge of revenue agreement upon adoption of this resolution and then submit a annual certification to CalRecycle on annual basis. Then we, we will need to finalize and present to the city council for the watershed expansion, which we got awarded in this February. We have a tipping fee review, final recovery, final cover recommendation analysis will be done by end of this year, I mean, the second quarter of fiscal year 2026. We will then move ahead, go, moving forward with the initiated community outreach for the post-closure sites using planning. So at the very last, our recommendation is to approve the resolution and the pledge of the revenue agreement with CalRecycle. So I'm ready for any questions.
Has this been budgeted, Mr. Galanian? The deficit that we need to kick in?
No, it has not been budgeted and hence the, the alternative to, for the pledge of revenue agreement.
Where's it going to come from at some point? I mean, we've got a...
So, I mean, basically the way that the statute works, Mr. Mayor, is you can either pay all of it and be, have it funded at the time you close, or you can sign this pledge agreement. We've got 62 million of the 87 million already funded, so the, the pledge will allow you to longer period of time to make those payments. So I'm not sure what the plan is in terms of budgeting those payments going forward, but we have a longer period of time to do that.
Okay. Councilmember Asaturian?
I see our new finance directors in the audience. If I can welcome this one. Is this something that the public works worked with, finance and your recommendation?
Yes, finance staff worked extensively with the public work staff to understand the situation and finance is actually also the one that negotiated with CalRecycle those two options. So if I can try to simplify it, basically, we're talking about the timing of money. We are on the hook of the city to provide the maintenance for 30 years after the closure. Our option is basically to fund the minimum fund balance up to 71 million based on the requirement right now, which will cost us 9 million dollars, which is not part of the budget. Or basically making a promise to pay as we go for 30 years to say that we are going to pledge our revenue for the 30 years of maintenance going forward and then we do not need to come up with that dollar right now. To the mayor's question about where does the money come from, that would be week two here. As your director of finance, that would be the long-term financial planning that we should really conduct as part of the city, along with the city leadership, to really bring a plan to that. I do not have a plan for you today, but that would be, we'll need to plan for that going into the future.
And if we do... I would add, I'm sorry, Councilmember Satrian, that this is, this wasn't done in vacuum. We have worked closely with the city attorney's office, Dorian Marte Rosson has had a huge part in this and it's been going on for a couple of years now. And we have, of course, worked with our finance team. We wouldn't have done it without them, so it's been a collaborative effort.
The, so if we take the pledge today and say you're, as you're planning your strategy moving forward, you come up with a different plan or we're able to get funds elsewhere, is this something that's amendable later?
Yeah, absolutely. So it looks like a revenue pledge, but the reality is we're making a promise for expenditures. So, and you know, honestly, the regulator don't really care where the fund come from on the revenue side. They just want to make sure that we're actually promising 30 years worth of maintenance at this dollar amount. As far as the other strategy, we have ample flexibility on how to fund it going forward.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, I have a couple more questions for you. Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Currently, we have 62 million dollars in our account?
Correct.
And we, we, we were supposed to have 71 million and we are short 9 million?
Yep.
Okay, so what is the total cost of the maintenance for next 30 years?
So that was based on, I think one of the slides that had the total number of 87, if I recall correctly.
87 million.
Right, so there are three parties at play over here, just to clarify. We as the owner of the landfill and then there's also LA Sanitation District.
They are the operator and 87 millions is the county price.
So the county actually does an actual estimate of that 87 million. And then the regulatory agency, CalRecycle, who also do their own estimate based on their formula, which they're not sharing with us, to estimate of, like today, how much do we need to have in the fund? So that's where the 71 million come from. Currently, our, our best knowledge of the total maintenance for 30 years is that's 87 million dollars, which we break down, set down into 30 years, which gets us to that 2.9 million dollars number for each one of those years.
That's, that's where I get a little confused, because if you have 62 million dollars and we are short 9 million and the total cost is 87 million?
Yeah.
From 71 to 87, if you, let's say we have the money and we cough up 9 million dollars today, the 16 million dollars difference, that's our basically liability to maintain the post-closure maintenance of the landfill for 30 years. But if you want to do 2.8 million dollars for next 30 years, that's 90 million dollars itself.
Yeah, so I asked the same question. So this is a great question to my finance staff about, you know, what's the difference? So the 87 million is an estimate just from the county sanitation district, thinking about the 100% of the 30 years maintenance. Versus the 71 million actually is a portion of our obligation based on CalRecycle's calculation. And then, you know, as, because we haven't closed the landfill yet, so they're actually factoring a percentage of that rather than 100% of the cost that we're, we need to have. And then basically give us a number to say as of today, you need to have 71. Next year, they will give us a new number to say, as of this year, you need to have this amount. And that's kind of how they do the calculation.
So if they estimate is today 87 million dollars and we have 62, we are short about 25 million dollars?
Yeah, you can look at it that way. I mean, yeah.
So is it 25 million dollars short for the next 30 years? Or this 25 million dollars deficit can go up and down?
It, and again, the number is an estimate, right? So basically, when we get to the closure and how much it actually costs us to maintain, that really is subject to actual operational cost at the time. And the 87 is, is our best estimate of today and it's not going to impact us all in one go. So it's going to impact us over 30 years, which is why I think the revenue pledge is actually a good way for us to, to handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had similar questions and so maybe, this is a question that I think I know the answer to and you can clarify. But it, it sounds to me like whether we put up 9 million now or we make this pledge, our actual obligation doesn't change. The actual amount that we're going to be paying out annually doesn't change.
Correct.
It's just a way, there are just two approaches to satisfying CalRecycle's obligation, requirement of us to show that we have the money to be able to complete the maintenance. So that's my understanding. That's correct, isn't it?
Correct.
It has zero impact on what we're actually going to be spending every year?
Absolutely.
Once the landfill is closed.
Yeah, it changes nothing off what we're actually going to spend.
Because I was confused, the same rate, you know, I'm thinking 9 million on the one hand, 2 point, whatever the number is over 30 years, like that doesn't figure. But I'm glad in the briefing you clarified that. I understand, this, this is the only other thing I have. I understand that, you know, right now, we're, we're adding to this fund through a portion of our tipping fees, right?
Correct.
And, and I did ask the question and I got the answer that the numbers that we've been budgeting for revenues from the landfill already take into account whatever portion we are contributing to the fund from our tipping fees. Is that, that's also correct?
Correct. That is correct. We, we estimated about 5 to 6 million dollars, no, 5 to 6 million dollars from the tipping fee to the general fund for this fiscal year, '25 to '26.
Okay, and that does not include any amount of the tipping fee that we may be contributing into this fund? Or are we not contributing out of tipping fees? Because the answer I got was we were.
It's to the general fund.
We have not been contributing money to the post-closure fund for many years. That's why we find ourselves in a deficit right now. The tipping fees that we've been getting have been going to the general fund as a source of revenue.
Okay, that was, okay, different than what I thought I heard on the briefing. I thought we were contributing a portion of our tipping fees every year to kind of...
Just to the general fund.
Just to the general fund. I see, I see. Okay, so this is going to be a, a financial obligation that, have we been, like when we do our five-year financial forecast, are we thinking about this? Is that, is that being incorporated in there?
It's certainly... Sorry, Jack.
Oh, go ahead.
If you know the answer, feel free.
Oh, no, 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 go ahead, John.
In our five-year forecast, we absolutely anticipated for loss of revenue when the landfill closes in '28, '29.
Right.
So we will not have that additional 5 to 7 million dollars that we had to, we, we had been experiencing. And at this point, there really isn't going to be a future hit to the general fund outside of the 1.3 million dollars, because the 2.8 would essentially be a pledge. The pledge, I suspect, would be against our general fund reserves.
Right, but at some point, we're going to have an actual financial obligation, right? At some point, we're going to be pinged out.
Right, and I think the question at that point is, are we ever going to get to a point in time where we're going, we're going to have to access all 87 million dollars at the same time and have to worry about making up that difference? At this point, in our five-year forecast, that's not anticipated. There's adequate funds with the sanitation district that have been deposited for the post-closure activities to take place.
Okay.
And there's an important element in the next steps. We are coming back to, to, we have conducted an analysis to go over our tipping fees, the duration of the, of the landfill in terms of when we anticipated closing and what the final cover. So that will affect ultimately the, the obligations to the city. So we expect that in the second quarter of this fiscal year. So we'll have a better understanding of what we believe the accurate estimate is.
Okay, but for right now, it's a very simple question of whether we want to do this revenue pledge and that seems to be the logical thing to do, since we don't have 9 million sitting around. So I, I support that, just leaving it there.
Last question?
No, my turn.
Oh. Where is our 62 million dollars parked right now?
It's in a separate capital project fund that is specifically designated for the post, uh, post-closure.
What sort of return are we getting on that money?
That's a good question. I'd have to follow up on that.
A measly 5% would give us 3 million dollars a year.
Yes, Mayor, we, we did ask Tricia. She said it's sitting over there and gain interest on, on annual basis.
How much?
It's essentially to about 2 and 1/4 as well.
2 and 1/4?
It's, it's on average what the, the city treasurer had quoted us, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2%.
Is that restricted based on our investment policy or is there...
I, yeah, I, you know, without knowing more, I...
Don't we throw that into a 215 fund or what was it that we...
115 trust?
115 trust, sorry. I mean, if you put it in the NASDAQ 10 years ago? Well, all of our, seriously, all of our, anyway, I mean, it's, obviously there's risk involved. We can't take that sort of risk, but that's a huge amount of money that we should be getting a decent amount of return on. So that interest is plowed back into the fund?
Yes.
Or it goes to our general fund?
It, it would be going back to the fund.
On that earmarked account.
Correct.
That might solve our problem. I mean, 2% is what?
1.2.
12, uh, yeah, 1.2, 1.3?
1.250.
Mr. Mayor, we'll have a, one of Jack's, yeah, one of Jack's goals...
Treasurer?
Yes. One of Jack's goals is to collaborate and have a conversation with our treasurer and see what can be done.
Good chunk of change. Okay, Mr. Garpetian?
And if it helps, I, I just want to add that it's not uncommon when you, that you see a slightly different investment return rate than today's rate, just because that some of those investments are actually long-term investments that has been made possibly three, four, five years ago, when the interest rate market is not in today's. So, so to me, it's not a huge surprise that our rate is, our overall rate is not necessarily at today's market rate.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question. I did a quick, a quick calculation for, with 2% is million to 40 a year. If it's 3 or 4%, then it doubled the amount, so. With 4% would be 2.48.
Right. Okay, so these are estimated costs. We need to have it on hand, which would be actual, the actual costs may vary once the closure work begins. I get all that.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion? Should we pledge this promise to pay when the time comes?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that.
Oh, Mr. Mohl, hi. Mr. Mohl.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mobile. You know, I should not be speaking here tonight on this subject matter. Who should be here is Jackie Gish and the members of the Glendale Homeowners Association. Okay, they've been pushing for this closure for many years and there's nobody from homeowners who have. I'm a member, I am a member of Glendale Homeowners Association, but the board is not here. Why? MIA, I think, okay? The city never wanted to close the landfill. Why? We needed the revenue to pay for all the pet projects, all the pet projects, like bike lanes, you name it. We have a revenue problem. Where's the city treasurer making good investments with our money? I was disappointed to hear that he didn't have time recently to check the books when he came before the city council to discuss the city treasurer. What are we going to do with this landfill and the finances? Been kicking around for many years now. Unfortunately, I think kicking it down the road has come to the end. There's nobody, where's Jackie Gish? The spokesperson for the homeowners association, who comes here every week and gives you her opinion, but not tonight. Mr. Brothman, you know her. Why didn't you give her a phone call and let her know? Hey, you know what? We're talking about the landfill tonight. Why don't you be here? MIA. Now, that's politics for you, but it's a sad day that we don't have our ducks in order. We don't have our ducks in order and the chickens are coming home to roost, as they would say. We have two new finance people right now and they're still scratching their heads. What are we doing? We have a city treasurer who can't make good investments. You know what? Can I apply for a job? City treasurer maybe? Finance? I don't know what job I should apply for, but I only have a degree in geography and not finance and accounting, all that big stuff. I just have a degree in what some people would call common sense. You don't need a rocket scientist to figure out that we screwed up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
Mayor, no more cards and no calls.
Mr. Brothman?
Yes, I will move the resolution for the pledge of revenue agreement.
Seconded by Councilmember Asaturian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asaturian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kusakian? And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Item, please.
Next item is 10A hearings, community development regarding 1520 Cedar Hill Road, consideration of the Glendale registered nomination and...
consideration of the Glendale registered nomination and request for Mills Act historic property contract. Mayor, I do have three cards for this item.
Remind me at the appropriate time.
Open the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we will open the hearing on item ten A. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, the mayor, members of city council, I'm just going to turn it over to Ani Manatsakanyan, our planner, who has worked on, on this report for the presentation.
Anybody know how the All-Star game is going? Nationally? Did Otani hit a homerun or something?
What is happening right now?
Got some technical issues we're working on. Giving us bad information, Mr. City Attorney. Oh, homerun, oh, Malcolm.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we're, I guess, experiencing some media...
We can, Mr. Mayor, we can buy some...
Media issues.
We can do, uh, ten, ten A, you got it? You can do ten A? Oh, send it to...
Okay.
I'm waiting until it comes in. Thanks.
That's a big file, okay. The only other item is item thirteen. Excuse me, item, uh...
Eleven A and thirteen A.
Eleven and thirteen.
I don't have it.
Let's just see. How long is your update on eleven A, Mr.?
Mayor, council members, it'd be very brief, handful of minutes.
Why don't we do eleven A, which is the update while we wait for this file to download?
I'll read it into the records.
Yes, eleven A.
Uh, reports and information, eleven A, Director of Community Development, regarding update on AB one-thirty, SB one-thirty-one, including impacts on building code updates, sequel and permit streamlining.
Mr. Calvert?
Uh, Mayor and council members, good evening. Uh, this was intended to be a little bit more of a deeper dive in terms of, uh, information regarding some of these, uh, recent changes in the bills. Uh, to be quite frank, after we sat down and reviewed some of these, we, I think we kind of all walked away a little bit more confused than we first looked at it. Um, so I'm going to provide a little bit of a high-level overview of, of two elements that we think are going to impact, uh, really our planning, entitlement and, and permitting, permitting process, and how it may relate to future changes such as, um, electric reach code uh, for consideration. So, under this, um, one of the key components of this was, uh, in AB one-thirty, uh, essentially sequel exemptions. Um, the change in this is going to allow for urban infill projects that, um, meet a certain criteria. There's a number of different elements that will apply to us, uh, ultimately. Um, but what we've learned thus far is that, uh, especially when it comes to historic structures, if the building is not already on the register, um, that is going to allow these projects to be exempt. Um, ultimately, it needs to provide, uh, certain minimum, uh, residential density requirements, uh, that's going to relate to the size of the property and then the, uh, number of units per acre, essentially. Uh, but what I would say is most of our urban projects, our downtown urban infill projects would find themselves exempt. Um, there's a bit of a caveat where, um, uh, there is a requirement to consult with, with tribal organizations to get their input, which then at that point triggers a, a shot clock for us in terms of review and approval of projects, and that's going to put that at sixty days uh, for anything that's, uh, administrative review, that's not requiring, um, any additional uh, kind of review or components to that. Some of the other elements don't really comply or, or really apply to us. Uh, projects need to be eighty-five feet or under, anything over that or a hundred percent affordable then has to pay prevailing wages, so there's that kind of caveat that goes along with it. Um, but I, I thi, I do think that some projects that we've seen come across this dais before are going to find themselves exempt at this point, um, especially the larger multifamily projects. Uh, so that is to be expected. Now, some of the changes for the, the building code itself, as you know, in the triennial cycle, we're allowed to go and, and update our, our building code, put in, um, changes to this that typically, uh, we try to respond to local conditions, if you will. Uh, that can be for a number of different reasons, topography, seismic activity, whatever it may be. Um, this bill is essentially trying to freeze the building, uh, the, the building code regulations as far as residential goes for about six years. I believe it would run until, uh, June one of twenty-thirty-one, if I am not mistaken, yes. Um, there's a window in there where we can make changes potentially, and this is where we're still a little murky and still a little uncertain. Um, the idea is that anything that goes beyond that, uh, any sort of reach code would have to be from our first interpretation approved by October one. Um, that would be going through the city council, that'd be going through the state building, the state energy commissions as well. Um, we are still waiting for an interpretation on that. Uh, Mr. David Jones, our sustainability officers, already reached out, uh, to one entity to try to find out, they're not sure as well, they're currently consulting with their, uh, their legal team to determine whether or not, um, uh, it's upon, uh, receiving our amended code or the reach code that we could potentially propose, if it was in the case of, say, electrification, or if it's upon their review and they're signing off on it as well. Um, so we're not sure on that right now, we're not sure how that impacts it. Um, uh, we do know that prior direction had been given about returning, uh, information on a reach code, so that doesn't necessarily impact that, it's whether or not we're going to beat the shot clock of October one, uh, whether or not we make those kind of changes. We also, as a building and safety group, uh, independent of, of anything related to, to electrification, will need to look at any changes that we would want to make to the building code. As you know, uh, in community development, we've been on kind of a longstanding process here of trying to improve our systems, uh, increase efficiencies, reduce delays, and we do know that there are certain elements of our building code that maybe could help improve that. We don't know if we're going to be able to move forward with that. Uh, I say that partially because there's still some definitions that we're uncertain of. Uh, state building commission, um, is actually asking some of these questions, building officials are posing these questions, um, IBC, uh, local chapters, because if we take, say, for example, everything in the, in, in, in what was written in that bill says residential, non-residential, well, what does that mean for mixed-use buildings? It's a pretty basic question, but we don't know how some of these changes are going to apply to those until we get that kind of clarification. Um, so I was hoping to be able to go into a little bit of a deeper dive, kind of the nuts and bolts of this, but we are still having to look at this from our own perspective. We need to get further with our city attorney's office as well and go, get some of their interpretations, and we're also just waiting to hear back from various entities as well on questions that we posed. So, happy to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Rick?
Mr. Garcia?
I, I just wanted to add one point on the sequel exemption. Um, in addition to, as Mr. Calvert, um, summarized, um, the limitations of it and, and how it does apply, how it does apply though to a, a larger, um, group of projects than the current sequel exemptions apply. For that particular exemption, uh, there's, after it's, the city approves it and, and does the consultation with the Native American tribes that Mr. Calvert described, there's a very compressed timeframe, then the city has to approve a project that's exempt. Um, and that's all the approvals except administrative appeals, so whether it's a density bonus approval or designer review or anything else, uh, the city's going to have thirty days to approve that project. So, just, that's something we're going to be working with, with staff on and figuring out how to get, you know, projects that might be able to, like, how to make sure that they get, get those approvals, get, we can still require public notice, public hearings, all that sort of thing, but, um, that, there, there is going to be a very short timeframe that, uh, so all cities are going to have to approve those projects that fall within, within that exemption.
Okay, question?
Mr. Carpet?
You mentioned, did I hear you right, you said thirty days to approve a project?
Assuming that once application's complete, everything is in.
Okay.
And, um, then, and then after the, the determination on the exemption is complete, and then after the consultation's complete, all the discretionary approvals have to be approved within thirty days.
And these are for the large downtown projects, mixed-use projects?
Any, any project that, that is, falls within the exemption, which is going to, as Mr. Calvert said, going to be a lot of projects, if not most projects in Glendale. And, uh, as long as it's under, even if it's actually, even if it's, uh, over eighty-five feet, still exempt, it just triggers that prevailing wage requirement as well.
ADUs will fall under that too?
Uh, I will have to check.
I, I'll have to check on that, I don't think it does, and, and I do need to verify that because, uh, the notes from my staff when they reviewed said it was sixty days, not thirty.
Okay.
So, I, I need to check on that, but it's, it's one of the two.
Thirty to sixty days. And also, you mentioned something about if the projects are over eighty-five feet tall, are they, are they not exempt? If they are over eighty-five feet?
No, they're kicking the requirement for prevailing wages. Uh, that, they would then have to participate with, the same thing for anything a hundred percent affordable as well, which I will say that we don't really see that from a private market perspective, anything a hundred percent affordable typically is coming from the city, which is already prevailing wages.
So, if they're over eighty-five foot tall, eighty-five feet tall, they, they, it kicks in the, the prevailing wage?
Correct.
Okay, but they're still exempt from sequel process?
Correct. That's just, uh, kind of the stipulation, the caveat that they have to abide by.
Correct, so if they want, if an applicant comes in with a building that's taller than eighty-five feet, that, and, but they want to use that exemption, then there's going to have, they, the project will have to have a condition that they pay prevailing wage. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Calvert, can you explain the, the reasoning behind the six-year pause on electrification? I don't, I mean, coming from California legislature, I know they've been generally very, uh, friendly towards that sort of thing, what's, is there something going on with that?
Uh, to, to be clear, it's not just electrifications, any changes to the IBC. Uh, the only changes we would be allowed to make in that window during any of our triennial updates would be related to things driven by the international building code, any state building code requirements. Uh, the justification behind it essentially is to, uh, try to still, uh, try to assist in the development of, of housing, housing production, uh, concerns over costs or, you know, codes that may be too onerous, uh, that could drive up costs, cause delays, things of that nature.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, um, I've been, uh, involved with a lot of groups, um, lobbying against what was the original version of this bill, which was called AB three-sixty. There are a lot of really strange things about this. For instance, the author talks about helping with fire rebuilding, helping with, uh, uh, housing production, yet the code freeze also includes existing buildings, which really just makes no sense. And I, I've spoken to the pro-tem's office, I've spoken to the, um, speaker's office, it's a speaker bill, uh, and nobody's ever been able to give an answer on that question. So, there's, I, I hate to say this, but I, I, I tend to think that there's something else that, uh, that we don't know about that's driving this. There was a lot of opposition in the senate, but, um, it was all short-circuited. It was supposed to go through two committees, supposed to go through the housing committee and local government committee, um, but for some reason, the governor wanted this in the budget bill, and it bypassed all the committees and it got approved through the budget trailer bill. So, there are a lot of people that are very upset. Uh, I know the environmental community is very upset, but I also know that the, uh, building official community is very upset because, and this is, this is stuff I don't really fully understand, but there's the international business, uh, code, uh, what is it called? The international building code, right?
Right, IBC.
And that cycle is now going to be on, is not going to be consistent with the California cycle, and so apparently, uh, I've heard from building officials that say this is going to create a lot of confusion. And so the comment I wanted to make is, when you do get a better sense of how this is going to play out, I would like to have you come back, maybe have our building official come back and talk about where and how this creates additional complexity and how we're going to deal with that, because I, I, there are a lot of building officials that have expressed the fear that this is actually going to make approvals more difficult, um, despite the intent of the bill to streamline, uh, uh, construction, streamline, uh, housing production. So, I just wanted to share that because I have been quite involved speaking to the, uh, different offices as well as to the, the bill, uh, the primary bill author is Nick Schultz, our own Nick Schultz, uh, and I've spoken to him many times, um, and those have been interesting conversations.
Uh, Councilmember Brotman, uh, our intent is to come back once we have a better grasp on this and, and give a broader update to council, so. Do expect that to come in the near future.
And if I could just say one other thing, because it relates to the new business item, I have a, a new business item here to talk about, um, this, uh, AC to heat pump, uh, Calgary reach code. Uh, I'm, it's kind of moot at this point, um, because staff is already working, already has direction to work on that, and they're looking now to see whether that is even something that can be done in this short-time window we have. If it can, they're going to move it forward, if it can't, they're not. Um, so I don't need to get, um, council's support on bringing anything forward.
Ten A, there's already some action on...
Yeah, there's action, I'm sorry, it's a lot of detail, but, um, basically, I'm just saying we can disregard that new business item today.
I have a question, I'm a little bit, uh, I just want a clarification. If this was a new, uh, business item and it hasn't been voted on, how is it going forward with, with... Staff has done most of the work and is going to somehow, uh, if possible, get into our code?
Because I had brought it up before and got support for staff to start working on it, so they've already gotten the direction to start working on it. Um, the item...
Why is it again on a new business agenda?
It's because originally I wanted on the new business agenda to talk about us opposing the bill, AB three-sixty. That was originally what I proposed, I wanted us to put in an opposition letter to the bill. Then, when AB three-sixty got merged into the budget bill, I said, "Let's hold off and see where things stand." And that's why I wasn't clear on what I wanted, but now I am clear that I, there's nothing I need. So, I'm, I'm saying, let's just drop it.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just want to get a clarification from our, is it the attorney, city, city manager or our planning director as to, what, what is it that they're working on that it's, we don't need any more discussions at this time and it may get approved and moved forward?
No, no, no.
I...
No, it, it still has to come back to council. What I mean is I don't need to get approval to get it agendized, it does have to come to us.
The direction we received, staff received, was to bring a report back from council, I believe it was in April. So, if that report comes back and this, uh, statute lies in, in effect, what happens at that time?
Well, we have a certain amount of time to do this, so if there's council support to do it, and if we can do it in the timeframe, we'll do it. If there isn't council support, or if that timeframe just is impractical, we won't.
I just heard that, we, there is, there is no...
Because that's not clear, you say, it's...
Correct, that's the...
Standards, one is when we submit it, the other is when they receive it and approve it.
Correct, that's, that's the portion we are unclear of, and, and I know that Mr. David Jones is here, so if I, if I speak out of turn or out of line, please come in and interrupt me. Uh, but that is the intent, is that, uh, this was requested to come back to council, this, as, as Councilmember Brotman said, this could be a point if we find that these timelines are too compressed and it can't move, move forward, then we don't move forward with it. Either way, council still has to, to vote on if that's going to move forward, that's what was asked to come back.
Okay, if you can send us a memo as to what, uh, what you're working on, because I'm not aware of it, I wasn't here, but, uh...
Okay.
It doesn't have to be, you know, a memo would be fine, so, I just like to know what are we working on, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's no other questions on your report, thank you, Mr. Calvert. Again, please, please keep us posted as picture and the legislation becomes more clear as to how it'll be administered. Uh, let's go back to the city clerk and read the item.
Item ten A, uh, community development regarding fifteen-twenty Cedar Hill Road, consideration of Glendale registered nomination and request for Mills Act historic property contract. Mayor, I do have three cards for this item and no calls.
Okay, we had gone to Mr. Golanyan, who had gone to Ms. Manatsakanyan, so let's just go right to you.
Thank you, um, good evening, Mayor Najarian and council members. Um, before I get started, I do want to apologize if my voice goes up and down or is a little raspy, I'm just recovering from losing my voice.
No problem, no problem.
Thank you.
Just pull the mic forward if you can.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's...
Um, so fifteen-twenty Cedar Hill Road was built in nineteen-sixty-two by Modern Accent Custom Homes. The permits were signed by Ms. E. Bomel-Hothian, who was the owner of the company. She was possibly the designer, which is interesting, because we don't know of, um, many other women designers in the city of Glendale. There's interesting things about this, um, house, such as the J shape that follows the curve of the street, as you can see in this aerial, and the curved dining room windows, um, but a lot of those features don't necessarily come together in a very consistent way. Here are some other parts... Here are some other parts of this revisible north facade as it wraps around the corner and a better view of the rock roof. The rear facade shown here curves and hugs the pool. And on this slide over here, we have a rendering of the original design, which looks like it was anticipated having a flat lot. You can see that the tops of the windows and the doors extend up to the underside of the roof and they have a consistent height. When you see the house as built, as displayed on the bottom, that consistency has gone and we have multiple levels of window heads and sizes of openings that lead to some less than perfect proportions due to trying to fit the design onto the sloped site. We should also note that the house has had some alterations, including a number of replaced windows, the curving planters at the front, and screen wall at the front facades, and some decking added to the rear pool area. Here is an example of one of the features that does not go up to the underside of the roof. These features seem to be stranded and have a little bit less architectural meaning. And over the years, as we've reviewed Glendale Register nominations, HPC has set the bar higher to focus on exemplary specimens of architecture. And while we think the house has interesting features, they don't come together in a way that places it in the category of other modern-style properties that have been listed in the register. During the hearing, HPC had a split vote that was somewhat strange, because they recommended two to one for the Glendale Register, but not the Mills Act. Staff and one commissioner did not find that the home meets the exemplary aspect of Criterion Three and should not be designated. The applicant has informed us that she would like to opt out of the register if she is not granted the Mills Act. That concludes my presentation, and staff and applicant are available for any questions from the council. Thank you so much.
Does council have any questions?
I do, actually.
Yes. Councilmember Najarian.
So I think last time these mill applications that came forward, there were some good points that were made with respect to just historic designations in general. Can you walk me through, they basically get a tax exemption?
So the Mills Act is the tax reduction program. Not every property that is on the Glendale Register applies or grants the Mills Act, but typically they go hand in hand. So this doesn't, this kind of a vote typically doesn't happen. I think this is the only property that this kind of situation where they granted the Glendale Register, but not the Mills Act has been, has occurred.
Okay. So based on this property that's in front of us today, how much in revenue would the city be losing on an annual basis if we approved this?
So those calculations are typically done at the county assessor. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, and it also depends on how long a property owner has owned the home. I think we typically go off of estimations on what we give property owners, and it depends on the, whatever calculation the county does at their level during the next property tax cycle. So we estimate for a property like this, maybe 40 to 50% of a tax reduction to the property owner.
I see Mr. Platt is here. Do you have any solid numbers that may be from your years?
As Ani said, it's a little bit of a mystery what happens at the assessor's office. So we never know in advance what the number is going to be. We tell people 40 to 50% for residential properties. We just pulled the numbers through 2024. There were houses making 60, 70% savings annually on their property taxes.
60, 70% on their.
Reduction of their property tax. The goal from the state is to recognize that historic properties often require higher investment for certain things, so this is a balance.
So how much of that is the city getting?
13 cents on the dollar.
Yeah, 13 points. The city, the average loss to the city as of last year was about 1,400, $1,500 per property. For a total, if I remember, of about 120,000, definitely less than 150,000, lost to the city per year for the entire program. We have about 100 and.
Sounds like a communications manager position for the police department. Okay. I think it would be worthwhile for us to have these numbers when, in the future, these hearings are being done specifically on those properties.
Well, we can't for the current nominations. We don't know what that's going to be. But I can give you, I just gave you the averages over time.
But you wouldn't be able to pull that data and get it from the county assessor and include it in your report? Not today, just in the future.
No, we never, we never know until we submit the Mills Act contract to the assessor what the reduction is going to be.
Yeah, if, my recollection, Councilmember, is that they use a different approach to valuing the property than you normally would, and that's how they come up with a different value. It's, I think, fair rental value as opposed to just comps. And so we, it's not something we could do. They do it based on whatever methodology they use, and then they, they let us know what the number is.
Okay.
Councilmember Garbityan.
Mr. Platt, or whoever can answer. So the question that I have is, so HPC was okay for it to be designated as a historic resource, but not the Mills Act?
Two out of three commissioners.
Okay. But the staff report, staff doesn't agree with HPC's observation or opinion on being registered as a historic.
Correct.
Property, as well as, of course, if you can't register it as a historic property, you can't have a Mills Act. So you're against both of them, basically.
Yeah, for the, for the reasons Ani presented. We take seriously previous council direction, especially thinking about surveys, to kind of raise the bar for what is eligible for the Glendale Register, what is significant to the city. This house has several strikes against it based on the design, as Ani laid out, and we think it's not a good example of modernist architecture in Glendale. It's an interesting house. It's beautiful on the inside. I'll just say it's cool, but it's not at the level of previous designations we've given for modern-style houses.
And HPC's decision was based on Criterion Three, which is the design of the project?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? We do have some speakers. Let's hear from the.
Here I do. First person is Pratima Anne Schmidt?
Good evening, council members. My name is Pratima, and I'm the co-owner of Cedar Hill. This house was recommended to the registry based on Criterion Three, and its value particularly is an expressionist modern house. I think what they failed to tell you is that the commissioners actually strongly had a strong opinion that it did fill the criteria, particularly as an expressionist modern house. And expressionist design embraces particularly organic shape, flowing lines, and abstract forms inspired by nature, which successfully evoke the emotional life of the designer or artist. Cedar Hill distinguishes itself with its fluid lines, its use of dramatic curve, organic shape, natural stone, light, and integration of form into the J-shaped lot. The house, as you know, was designed by a woman architect, which was unusual for the time, and it embodies a feminine design perspective that conveys a sense of calm and ease to its expressionist architectural style. I will say that, you know, Jay argued that there's a lack of grandeur, or that in particular he, they had issues with the scale of the windows and the proportion of the stucco. And this was mentioned in the commissioners' meeting, that actually, when they walked up to the property, they didn't have any of those, you know, one commissioner in particular was like, we didn't have any of those issues. I think it is a beautiful example of expressionist design. I think it possesses high artistic value. I think that it deserves the protection that the registry would give it. The registry and the Mills Act tend to go hand in hand. So, you know, that is what I would be requesting, is that, that it would be afforded the privilege of both. I'm happy to answer any questions if you should have them.
Thank you.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Would you still be interested in registering that historic resource if you don't have the Mills Act?
So for me, in order to, you know, with the rising cost of living and maintaining a historical house, myself and future owners, it would be in their best interest to also have the Mills Act along with the historical registry. So I would say that I would probably not go forward with it, I would not go forward with it if I wasn't getting the protection of both. And I do think that it wasn't very well represented in, you know, the presentation, that it was actually strongly recommended to be on the historical registry. And the first motion in the commissioners' meeting was to approve both, but they ended up approving the historical registry and not the Mills Act, which is unusual.
Yeah, because if the house is registered, whether it's registered or not, the maintenance is there, the cost of maintaining the house is there.
Exactly. And it has to be done to the standards of the, of historical designated sites. So that's an additional expense, and it requires, you know, a sense of stewardship and extra financial costs to be able to do that. And I, I think that this property deserves that, and I would be a happy and, you know, honored steward to preserve this property. And no recommendations were made to change the property in order for it to be on the registry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
I have two more cards. Arag Gregorians? Arag, you have three minutes.
My name is Arag Gregorians. I live at 1527 Cedar Hill Road for the past 37 years. Basically, every time I leave my house, I see her house. So it's a constant view that I get. The pictures that I see here are not justifying what the house in itself shows or basically. If I ask you to take a picture of me, and let me put it this way, if you take a picture of me standing here, you know, it's just a normal old guy. If you zoom into my nose, it would be a big Armenian nose. There is a difference. And this, this basically, the, these pictures that are shown here do not justify this property. All you need to do is drive by it and you see that it probably is not what is depicted there. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final card is Glendale Yimby.
Hello, City Council. First of all, I think you're doing a great job, especially you, Dan. Please don't move. We love having you here. Additionally, my name is Shane Lee. I'm with Glendale Yimby. We oppose using the Mills Act to transfer wealth from the city to the owners of 1520 Cedar Hill Road. Glendale has for too long abused the historic designations to preclude new dense developments, which would provide housing for working-class people. We need more apartments and fewer bland single-family homes like at 1520. The property on Cedar Hill Road is not historic. It is, it's not, does not fit with neighborhood character, and it should be demolished so that we can build affordable housing that has good design that people in Glendale can actually afford. I don't think we should give tax cuts to wealthy homeowners. I think if you buy a property, it's your job to maintain it. And I don't think we should give special tax cuts to people who own homes. I don't even own a home. And I think that the money that we're losing from this would be better used for something like rental subsidies or paying the salaries of our hard-working city clerks and employees. The, I think this, Mills Act property owners are overwhelmingly wealthier folks who want to use public funds to subsidize the maintenance of their properties. I just don't think this is a good use of city funds giving tax cuts to people who are objectively doing well off, because they own a very nice house in a very nice neighborhood. I just don't think we should be use our public funds to give to people who are already doing pretty well. And, yeah, that's it. It's not historic. If you ask anybody in Glendale, nobody even knows about this house. It doesn't have any value to the community. Nobody's begging you to save it. Nobody knows about this house, except for the people in this room. I just think it's, it's, it's pretty elitist, in my opinion, to wax poetic about a house that a small number of people will live in. That property, if it were upzoned, or even if you, if you just built like a couple 80 U's, you could house like 10 people there. And when you make something historic, then it makes it more likely you're going to have like a historic designation, and then you might have a historic district, and we already have too many of those. And those districts, again, are used by homeowners to inflate the value of their properties and to prevent new dense units from being built there. And we have too many, and I don't think we need another one. So please reject this request, and please don't give a tax break to homeowners. Everybody needs to pay their fair share of taxes. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. There was another request that came in too late. And I apologize. No, I'll, I'll be the judge of that. You can sit down, Mr. Mohal. I'm sorry, but you are late. We're going to start to enforce our rules. So colleagues.
Do you have questions?
I'll close the hearing. I hope a question doesn't come up. I'll just go first. I, I understand this house was evaluated twice by the HPC, in 2010 and most recently in 2024. Both times it was turned down from the Mills Act requirement, I believe, due to significant The den was extended into the rear of the yard. Many of the windows and sliding glass doors were replaced. Wood decking added to the rear. And it's rare, it's rare that the HPC, in my opinion, turns down a home. I mean, Mr. Platt, in all the years we've been there, that is, you've been, I think, if you err, you and your commissioners err on the side of preservation, and in this case, I just see that it wasn't supported by my commissioner at that time, as well as another commissioner whose opinion I do hold in regard. So I don't think I'm ready to go Mills Act on, on this. It's just not enough there to make it happen. Councilmembers, if you have any comments, we can take a vote if you don't have comments.
I'm not in support of either the historic, neither the historic designation or the Mills Act.
I'll make it.
Mr. Brockman.
Yeah. I have no issue with Mills, with the concept of designations or Mills Act for the right properties, but I, I do agree with staff, the bar should be high, and we've asked in the past that we actually make that bar higher. And so given that and the fact that neither the HPC nor staff reached the conclusion that this property would be eligible for the Mills Act, it's really hard for me to, as a non-expert, to kind of challenge that analysis. A lot of experts have looked at that, at this, and come to the same conclusion, and not only now, but back, whatever it was in 2010, when this was first litigated. So on that basis, I, I can't support Mills, and because the, the property owners are saying that they don't want Glendale Register, if they don't get Mills, I think then it becomes fairly obvious that we, we deny both.
And so that would be three, item.
Yeah. It was the third, it was the motion at the end, which denies the listing and denies the.
10A3.
Yeah.
And so if that's your motion, is there a second?
I mean, that was my comment. If you want me to make that a motion, that's my motion.
Okay. So let's take that as a motion.
I'll second it.
Second it. Roll call, please. Second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Al-Sedarian?
Yes.
Rotman?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is discussion of councilmembers' future agenda requests. A report from Councilmember Rotman in consideration of reach codes in light of AB 130 and SB 131.
Okay, Mr. Rotman has requested that that be taken off calendar, not considered at this time. We do have other requests to be placed on consideration for.
So I have three items. I'm just going to list these to get clarification and if, you know, the, the meeting comes and it's resolved, then I'll pull it then. But number one is revenue and the final discussion on the revenue streams that we started to talk about during our budget session. The second is more of a clarification and perhaps staff can provide a more thorough explanation. But I received a message from Miles at the Alex Theater yesterday noting that the, the city council that had approved the equipment on June 3rd still has not received the purchase for the equipment and they need it before the start of the season and especially for the Alex Theater's 100th anniversary. I reached out to staff asking what the deal is with purchasing. I was told that, Miles had notified that staff had initially said that there's a 30-day hold on any purchasing. And then I got an email that says it was 10 days. Then I learned that there was a new requirement that was placed today for additional insurance. Then by the end of the day, I was told it is no longer required. I, I don't know what's going on in our purchasing department, but I would like some clarification on like our processes and specifically to ensure that the Alex Theater ends up getting the equipment when they need it and well in advance of the Alex Theater's 100th as these equipments are needed for that. And this council had already approved that in June. So I don't know why, I don't know what the holdup is. I'm just, I'm, I'm asking for an update from staff that clarifies all of these points because, you know, within the last day, I've just been told too many different things.
Was it the June of this year?
Yes, June 3rd. So they should have been like, there's nothing that holds it from.
It's still in July. It's not even, it's like almost 30 days.
Yes, so, but this council approved for them to, to be able to get it. This isn't the first time I'm hearing about the purchasing department and the delays. And so I just want a clarification on the process as well as to know what, what are the, I think the council also needs to know when they're actually dark, that they're not doing any purchasing for, for anything. And then the third is, I know, I, some residents had reached out to me noting that there was an opposition petition submitted to the city for the Verdugo Historic District. I understand that as part of the process, when the time comes for the historic district, you're, you have to have a five-to-zero vote. I, I want clarification, whether it's from our city attorney's office or from our staff on. I recognize that area right now because an application has been submitted. All the homes within that survey are actually paused. And so because there's an opposition petition that's been submitted, is there a way for us to bring this item sooner in order for us to make a determination if there is a five-to, a five-to-zero vote on whether it's the survey or how we allow for, and if there isn't a five-to-zero vote, how we open that up for residents to do whatever it is that they need to do to their homes. Because the minute they submit the application for the historic district, everything gets frozen. But there's been an opposition petition that's been submitted with signatures at this point.
So maybe we could cast that in a broader term and update on the process involved in the Verdugo Hills.
Verdugo Woodlands.
I'm sorry, Verdugo Woodlands Historic District. Of which, by the way, I am conflicted. I don't know if anyone else is conflicted.
If you recall, there are three councilmembers that are currently have a conflict and we'll have to go through that process to randomly select councilmembers that participated at various stages of the process, but we will provide an, yeah, we'll provide an update. We'll provide an update on the process.
Maybe our city attorney, in the meantime, you can provide what the process would look like if there, if there is a, an opposition petition that's been submitted with qualifying signatures.
We'll look at all that, yes.
Okay.
Please update us. As far as number two, that's something maybe internally we could, I'm not sure council action would be the best way.
Asking for a report.
I, I understand.
I have a question on that. Miles is the operator of the Alex Theater.
Right.
He didn't contact you? He called?
And that was my first question.
That, that's, that's unprofessional to me. I'm sorry.
Miles had actually reached out to CDD. CDD had done his due diligence and.
The city manager is in charge. I know, of course.
That's right. That's one of our new rules, is no interrupting.
Okay.
Unless it's a point of order.
Was I interrupting? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So he did note that he had reached out to CDD and CDD had put in a request several times to purchasing and they weren't getting anywhere. And so he asked if I could check it out and I, I'm bringing it up because I think everybody needs to be aware.
Okay, so what kind of an equipment is that?
It's the, this, I think it was like three, three different things that we approved for them to move forward, so.
But to my knowledge, Mr. Mayor, member of city council, that has been sorted out internally and they can move forward. They found a way. Was there a hiccup? Yeah, we have to look into it. But the normal, the routine process would be if they don't get any member of the community, if they don't get a response from any of the departments, they should contact my office and we'll take care of it.
Yeah, they contact you. If you're not there, you're on vacation. They contact John. If not, they contact, we have like several people there.
I think any community member or community organization has absolute right to reach out to a council member and make them aware. I'm not opposed to anybody reaching out to the city manager or to the staff. But I think as stewards of our community and as elected leaders, if there is information being provided to us, my whole goal here today was to also make all of you aware.
Oh, I hope, of course, they can, they can contact the council members.
Okay, so just want to make clarifying points here.
No, I know, but the, the right thing to do is just, if there's a problem, to contact the people who can, and also contact the, the council member. Anyways.
Well, they did contact.
Okay, okay, we don't need to go further. As far as, so two is, has received some sort of resolution? Her second request?
Yeah, just have it, if it, if it doesn't need to be, if it's resolved by then, then it's fine. But, and actually, as a matter of fact, for, for most of those, if, you know, if there's a answer that's given.
And number one was a revenue enhancement discussion that we had in the budget process to bring back to us for action, I guess, or for further discussion.
Correct, Mr. Mayor. And what we indicated that these items will come separately individually as opposed to one whole package. So it's, it's in the works. We're working on it.
So do we need them, do we need to have that as a new business item or that's already in the works?
I have a, I have a sitting meeting with our city manager this week on Thursday. And so if I don't have additional questions, then I'm happy to pull that, just like I said in the beginning.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Therefore, brings us to the last item on our agenda.
Oral communication.
No, this is oral communication. I'm sorry, second to last item.
Correct.
Okay.
Second period of the oral communications.
Yes.
Discussion is limited to, limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, I do have three cards.
Let's invite them up.
Beth Brooks. Beth?
Okay, I just, I'm going to have a bunch of, just comments I wanted to make about the zoning and pro-housing, pro-density people who think that developers don't get tax breaks, they also get tax breaks. I mean, this woman didn't get her, her, her house on the registry and get whatever tax break she needed, but developers also get tax breaks. Density doesn't mean affordability. In fact, it could be the opposite because if you increase supply, it only reduces rents if the demand remains static. So if you're going to have all these, you know, giant apartment building warehouses, you're just inviting people from all over Los Angeles to move here, which isn't going to make anything more affordable. It really defeats the purpose. Basically, it only works if you increase the supply and the demand, you know, stays the same. Otherwise, you're just increasing the demand. So that whole thing just doesn't, you know, make sense to me. Still interested in a rental registry so we understand the vacancy rates in Glendale so that we're also smarter about if zoning changes, that you actually know how many units are vacant and you're only going to get that, I think, if you, you have a rental registry. I'm interested to know also how committees come about because I'd like to start a renters committee. I'd like somebody to, I don't know if I need a council member to sponsor, you know, not financially, obviously, a committee to have a rental registry to advocate for renters. I know at least on Nextdoor, a lot of people have no idea what's going on. They're just asking questions like, wow, they, Glendale just raised my mother's apartment, you know, who lives affordable housing and I don't know what to do and everybody's responding back and forth because they really don't have any information. And I think that that committee or commission could, could do outreach and education for the rental community. Regarding spending, I'm, you know, I always come up here and I'm always nitpicking about what you're spending money on because I'd like to know what the criteria that you use really for decision-making rather than often just rubber stamping all spending. You know, I believe you should prioritize problem-solving. I believe in triage, just like in hospitals where you treat the most, you know, injured person, sick person first. I don't believe in symbolic spending. I'm interested to know, interested in knowing how you're going to incorporate the Glendale survey, the poll into your spending decisions because that would seem to be the reason for actually doing the poll as opposed to just, you know, somebody emails, somebody, you know, I need some money. Like with the, I was at the Women's Commission meeting, which was very impressive, they're very impressive women. And, and, you know, asking for $2,000 by the YWCA, which is a multimillion-dollar organization, was to me really kind of obscene. Sorry. I know that the Rosie, you know, Camp Rosie is a great program, but I also feel that the $2,000 should have been spent on, you know, women fleeing domestic abuse. So are you vetting these organizations as well? Because they spend more than 50% of their expenses on salaries. Whereas the YWCA USA spends 34% and the YWCA of San Gabriel Valley spends 26%. So I would, I would, I would take a look at, you know, how people spend their money before you give them money. Because they're also, you know, applied for a grant for $630,000 from the city that I, I think you gave, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, the block grant. Regarding the agenda meetings, I think it's more efficient what Mr. Najarian did where people are speaking before you're really having discussions, but it's really hard as a member of the public because I like to hear what you have to say and then respond to that. So I even called in this afternoon regarding the meeting, but you had already taken all the public comments because I was hearing the discussions and I was like, oh yeah, I want to, I want to call in and speak after the discussions. But they said, oh no, they already took the public comments, which to me seemed to be backwards. Like how would you know what to mention if you had already done that? I'm running out of time. You know, I'm into the Zoom meetings. I also would, I also would appreciate it if you asked people to comment, not just that you send, you know, councilmembers emails, but say, hey, instead of coming in person or phoning, you could actually send in an email and if it comes in by noon of that day, we will include it in the minutes that we will publish next week as opposed to just making a public records request. That you have people's emails regarding your city council agendas as part of an official record. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Next is Mr. Mike Mohill.
So, no, he spoke on.
Mayor, he did speak on the agenda items, but not during the three-minute portion.
I did not speak during the three-minute portion. FYI.
You are welcome.
Want to watch my clock arm? Back to my five minutes, please. Want to set it, please? Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. To the three so-called progressive liberal Democrat council members, Asatrian, Rotman, Kasakian. Are we better off today than we were four years ago when President Joe Biden decided to have open borders and allowed over 20 million illegals to cross our southern border unvented and unchecked? The so-called progressive liberal Democrats' goal was to have a disproportionate number of illegal immigrants go to the blue states like California and New York. And they amplify the effect of a blue state vote because the illegals are counted in the census. The census is used to determine the number of representatives in Congress. The action can impact who controls the House and the presidency. To the illegals, the US was an all-you-can-eat buffet. In some states, it was a complete affront to citizens where illegals can get bank loans, mortgages, insurance, driver licenses, in-state college tuition and free healthcare. In San Francisco, the illegal aliens can vote for school board members. In New York State, illegals can already vote in city and state elections. Under the Biden administration, millions of illegal aliens receive Medicaid benefits. When former Democrat President Obama deported 3.5 million illegals, nobody from his political party protested. Likewise, in California, extending full-scope Medicaid benefits to all undocumented immigrant adults was originally at only $6 billion, but had cost state taxpayers $9.5 billion and still counting by the middle of March 2025. In 2024, illegal, eight million illegals were given social security numbers. A 2023 study showed that the net cost to the American taxpayer was at least $150 billion for Cali, and for California, the cost is almost $22 billion and still growing. The American taxpayer should not have to pay for their own demise. That's the word is demise. Paying for a program that actually encouraged this invasion. To all the Jackie Geishas that come here and others who counsel with bleeding hearts, innocent Lincoln Riley, Josh Ling Numgary and Rachel Morin paid the full price for the left's open border agenda as they were murdered, mind you, by the hands of illegal aliens. Democrats love to say, nobody's above the law, even if the president. So how come illegal aliens are? In 2024, the silent majority overwhelmingly rejected the so-called progressive liberal Democrats' agenda and elected Donald Trump as president to repudiate the invasion of millions of illegals. So again, councilmembers, are we better off today than we were just four years ago? Thank you.
Mayor, this is my last card and no callers. Edjimin Hakobian.
Thank you. Hello, councilmembers. My name is Edjimin Hakobian. Today I, I came here to again emphasize on. Today, I, I came here to again emphasize on creating a committee for analyzing the city's revenue and the new projects. This will bring the community to become partners in this process, and people who are interested would have more time to spend on analyzing, doing analysis on this type of projects. Based on the commitment that you made and the recognition that you all made, that the city is not going to be financially doing good in the near future, I think it's, it's reasonable to move forward and put priority on this topic. If we do not try to come up with preventive measures and increase our revenue, the only path forward is increasing taxes. And the survey clearly showed affordability is already a big concern for our residents. So I understand that Councilmember Asatrian requested revenue to be on the, on the future agenda items. I would appreciate it if you can consider creating a committee, so we can have more detailed discussion on the finances. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the, one of the commissions that you can use to have, to start that conversation, or if you haven't put, is our audit commission. I think, you know, it's, we don't really hear from them much, but that's something maybe we can start from, if you have any proposals, maybe start from there.
Does that conclude the cards and the callers?
Mayor, it does, correct.
Thank you. Then we go to new business. Mr. Rothman.
Okay. I will make a motion that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Ron John Faza versus City of Glendale et al., United States District Court Number 2:23-CV-01312-MRA, per N, SKX, close, per N. I have no idea what that is. In exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $33,275, this settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but is the compromise of a disputed claim.
Your second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadurian.
abstain.
Rothman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kassakian. And Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Mr. Karpetian.
Okay. I move that the city attorney by and hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Davine Anthony Escobar versus City of Glendale et al., Los Angeles Superior Court, Case Number 23STCV22828, in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $24,000. This settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff by defendant or by any person or department, but it is compromise of a disputed claim.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadurian.
abstain.
Rothman.
Yes.
Karpetian.
Yes.
Kassakian. And Mayor Najarian.
Yes. That concludes our business today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded, we are adjourned. Okay. Not too bad, 9:55 PM.